All right, I'm going to call to order the committee of the whole meeting at 5:31. For the good of the order and just an FYI, at some point here, I'm going to run out and get my laptop, which has been ruined because I forgot it. So that's why I'm going to get a spare and see that. Is there anything for the good of the order? All right, we'll move on to review of regular meeting agenda. I don't think, was there anything on consent, if somebody has a big question or might want to pull potentially? All right, so we'll go and move on to our first discussion item, which is update on the 2025-2030 Transportation Improvement Program with Larissa Grandal.
Good evening, Council Mayor. So, our transportation improvement project list that we have every year, the six-year plan length is actually through Washington Department of Transportation, or not, we need nineteen to go from last year. So, we're going through our transportation element and plan update, so it just doesn't make sense to try and force anything into it. So, we'll have a whole new segment here. Basically, the only update that I have, there's a map that I dropped if you want to open it, but it's the same, same map that we've seen for the last little year. And then, with that, my idea is transport.
Oh, were there any questions or around pretty straightforward? Yeah, okay, so we'll move on to update on the status of the transportation element and plan again with Larissa Grandal.
Yeah, so Larissa Grandal, Public Works, and Jessica and Patrick from Transpo are on, and I'll kind of help them a couple of times, I think, in their presentation, but for the most part, they'll give you an update as to the status of the transportation element update and the transportation plan update.
Thanks, Larissa. Hi, Council. My name's Patrick Lynch with Transpo Group, and I'll let Jessica introduce herself.
Hi, Jessica Lambert, also with Transpo Group.
And we've been working on your transportation plan update. Larissa, I think we have a slide deck. I don't know if that's something you want us to share our screen, or is that something you want to bring up and flip through?
We can do it, we can do it either way, whatever way you guys want.
Yeah, maybe it might be better to have you bring it up and then we'll just let you know when we need to advance the slides. Oh, I see how this works. Okay. All right, let's see, do you have it up?
This is the, yeah, not this one.
No, yeah.
There it goes. All right, we just couldn't see it. Yeah.
Sorry, not yet.
We can't see it right now.
Oh, I, oh, you can't see it now.
Yeah, the Zoom world gets it before we use.
Okay, so you, you can't see it right, right at the moment, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
You can't. Okay, we, Jess and I don't see it, though. I don't know, is that, Jess, do you see it?
Okay, what? I don't. I'm happy to.
I see it now.
Now I can see it.
I don't know, but if you guys can't see it when we see it, then.
We see it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So, sorry, oh, we got, we got through that. All right, so, yeah, you go to the next slide. So, what, what we're going to cover tonight is we're going to do kind of a high-level overview of the, the transportation plan update, kind of the work that we've been doing to update the plan. A particular focus of this cycle of plan updates for transportation has been multimodal level service. So, we'll discuss that. We'll talk about the progress we've made through updating existing conditions. And then, we'll kind of talk about the, the initial forecasting that we've done and then kind of what our next steps are. Next slide. So, yeah, we'll cover the, kind of the overview of what a transportation plan is, what, what the plan covers. Next slide. So, essentially, a transportation plan, it's a long-range plan that is consistent with the land, the city's land use plan, and is essentially, you know, taking that forecast land use, projecting trips onto a network, and then we identify issues related to capacity or safety, pet and bike systems, really, really anything with the transportation system, and then develop a project list that mitigates those impacts from, from growth, and then develops a plan to implement the, the project list over the life of the, of the plan horizon. So, and I guess that the one thing here to kind of understand is that, you know, we call it a transportation plan, but really, there's kind of two pieces to it. There's a transportation element that you can think of as more of a, kind of an executive summary. It's going to contain the goals, policies, the project list, kind of the core components in a more kind of summarized format. And then, there'll be a, a transportation plan that's more of a report that has all the nitty-gritty details and has more maps and charts and, and, and numbers. So, next slide. So, really, you know, it's a, it's a multimodal transportation plan, and the figure on the right kind of illustrates sort of, kind of the idea. But we're not starting from, from ground zero. You know, we have a previous plan that we're kind of building from there, and we're also kind of taking into account other work that the city's done, other subbury plans or studies, other work that's been done, and really, the transportation plan is a, a chance to reconcile those things and build a comprehensive multimodal transportation plan that kind of balances the different modes into a, a complete system, and it includes, like I mentioned before, yeah, project list that'll have planning level cost estimates, and then we'll develop a financing strategy based on existing city revenues that will project out over the life of the plan to develop an implementation strategy, and that's all packaged within the transportation plan. Next slide. So, our approach to the plan, I think, this one, next slide. I just want to kind of hit on a couple of things. So, there, this, what's kind of different with this update cycle is there are a, a couple of new requirements from the Growth Management Act and the Puget Sound Regional Council, and kind of chief among them is the requirement to kind of focus more on active modes. And one of the ways these updated plans will, will do that is through multimodal level service that we'll talk about a little more. But it's not just at the local level. WashDOT has also kind of adopted this philosophy, and so on WashDOT state facilities, they are also including complete streets. So, on projects, kind of the, kind of the typical projects that are greater than a half million dollars, they're required to address complete streets on those projects. So, it's kind of been this, this change in philosophy that's been kind of evolving over time. But now, it's, you know, with this latest update cycle, it'll be required in, in all of the local plans here in the Puget Sound, I guess across the state, really. And so, the, this graphic on the right is illustrating kind of the idea of how land use, level service standards, and a financing plan kind of work together to create a plan. So, there's, you know, at the top of the triangle, there's land use that's kind of driving the needs, right? Driving the demand, the needs. The plan will develop a project list that addresses those needs that is based on a level of service standard, and then there'll be a financing plan that demonstrates the ability to implement that plan with existing or known revenue sources over the life of the plan. And so, if all of those things are in balance, you know, then we have a plan that works. So, you know, this is something to keep in mind as we get to a draft plan. This is kind of what we're aiming for. Next slide. So, in addition to kind of these requirements, the plan will also be kind of forward-thinking about the trends that have been kind of occurring within transportation, I mean, just even since the last plan update, some of these trends that have been evolving with, you know, electric vehicles, more, you know, technological advances with the vehicle fleet related to autonomous and connected vehicles, shared mobility, you know, that's kind of Uber and Lyft and those types of services, as well as, you know, the work-from-home component, telework, e-learning, e-commerce, and those, how those things will evolve, especially over the life of the plan, as well as other themes such as climate change and equity. And so, I like when we kind of get into the forecasting phase of the project, you know, the plan is not a crystal ball, like, you know, I don't, you know, a lot of times it gets compared to like a weather forecast of like, you know, especially people will kind of ask, you know, how well does the, the plan reflect future conditions? You know, when we look back at old plans, like, how well does it reflect, you know, the conditions looking ahead? And it's difficult to do, just like it's difficult to predict the weather. But it's based on a set of parameters that we know at the moment, you know, it's a snapshot in time. And so, these forecasts have to be revisited periodically as things become clear. But it still provides kind of a path on, on information that we know now and how things are evolving over time as it relates to transportation and how people travel. So, the plan will start to flame, frame some of these issues. And then, you know, as, you know, years go by, we'll want to revisit and see, you know, and have the plan updated to reflect some of the, the changing conditions related to these, these bullets on the screen. Next slide. And so, yeah, the, you know, as with the other elements in the comprehensive plan, there'll be a public outreach and engagement. I'm going to let Larissa kind of discuss how the transportation element will be kind of bundled with the other comprehensive plan outreach efforts.
So, Larissa Grandal, Public Works, we did get AHBL to do the overall comp plan update, and so, transpo the sub, and our comp plan is both the comp plan update and our transportation plan update. So, we're kind of marrying the two together and, and doing a lot of the, the community engagement together. Comp plan survey went out, and there's results that I think will be shared forthcoming. We've had public meetings and open houses, and that's all we know. Have one more comp plan that we'll probably want to include transportation in, but that's towards the end of the process when everything's kind of wrapped up. We're done with the steering committee as far as the transportation is involved, and we are ongoing city council meeting. Everybody updated on.
Great, thank you. Next slide. So, we're, we want to dive into multimodal level service a little more, since this is kind of a major theme in this latest round of plan updates. Next slide. So, kind of what, I guess, you know, we'll kind of frame what, what we're, what we mean by multimodal level service and kind of why it's, you know, required as part of this, this plan update. But it's related to the Growth Management Act and recent amendments of the Growth Management Act that have, the Growth Management Act has always required levels of service standards be adopted in comprehensive plan. What's new this time is that they've made a point to highlight that, that the standards must address multiple modes and not just vehicle, vehicles. So, that's been kind of a change. And so, how that'll change the plan is sort of how it's, the plan, kind of how we measure success. And so, that's what we'll kind of go into, kind of what standards are, how they're measured, and what that means for developing a project list. Next slide. So, and as, as I mentioned, WashDOT is also sort of incorporating complete streets and kind of the multimodal philosophy in their planning. And so, again, even on state facilities, you know, WashDOT will be requiring kind of to address, you know, pet, bike, and transit in, within WashDOT projects where, and so, the two, the figures on the left are kind of kind of illustrating what we mean, and it's kind of historically, standards have been more vehicle-focused, and that, you know, represented by the large kind of vehicle icon with kind of the smaller kind of other modes. And really, what this kind of kind of renewed philosophy is doing is kind of rebalancing kind of the, the public right-of-way as it kind of prioritizes different modes. And so, it's not ignoring vehicles, it's just helping elevate the other modes so that those needs don't go unmet as we are doing our long-range planning. Next slide. So, yeah, this slide here. So, really, one way to kind of think about it is, you know, levels of service are related to transportation concurrency, and this is a, a term that, you know, will come up within the plan, and even once the plan's adopted, as the city is going through development review, transportation concurrency will be a term that, that you'll hear. And really, what it is relating to is the idea of balancing growth with our ability to implement the needed improvements to accommodate growth. And so, that's what the level, the level service standards do, is they're the measuring stick to identify what's needed. And so, by having multimodal standards, it'll help us identify the kind of different types of projects needed to accommodate growth that aren't just vehicle-related, you know? Whereas, we're just building new signals or turn lanes or things like that. These multimodal standards will also identify, you know, pet and bike and transit improvements. So, that's the idea. It's, it's, it's really based on the plan, and it's basically just measuring, you know, as growth is coming online, are we also kind of implementing improvements consistent with that growth? Next slide. So, kind of the way I like to describe it, you know, like with the, the measure of when we talk about multimodal level service, is the idea of what you measure is what you get. You know, as I was mentioning, if you are measuring just vehicle, like roadway capacity or intersection capacity, we'll just be identifying improvements to mitigate those deficiencies. And so, that's the idea behind kind of creating standards that address other modes is that by including that in our metrics, those, you know, our, our measuring tools become sensitive to those types of improvements, and then they get prioritized in our plans. Next slide. Again, there's kind of, when we talk about level service, it's a general term, and it sometimes gets misunderstood, but there's different ways of doing it. So, this is kind of our vehicular measures, even there's different ways of doing it. And so, these are, these are kind of illustrating two ways of doing it. One is a measuring cup where we're essentially measuring the capacity of our roadway system. And then, another way to do it is through delay and kind of is a measure of driver convenience. So, when you hear the term levels of service, it's sort of a, a broad term, but there's really kind of different ways of addressing levels of surveys even at the vehicular level. And so, we'll kind of get into that, but this is more just to be kind of aware of that idea. Next slide. So, we're really rebalancing kind of the idea. Like I mentioned, we're not ignoring vehicles, but we are prioritizing really kind of mobility and safety for the most vulnerable users of the system, which is kind of a paradigm shift. And that's why this inverted pyramid kind of has pedestrians at the top, because those are the users that, that are the most vulnerable. And, and so, improvements to improve their mobility and safety are, are paramount as part of this multimodal philosophy. Next slide. So, I'm going to let Jess kind of discuss kind of where we're at with reviewing the existing transportation system and what are the things we looked at.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. So, as part of this plan update, or not plan update, but planning effort, where we start with existing conditions and get a snapshot of kind of where we're at today, and so, collect and look at new data in and around the city. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, one of the first things that we look at is transportation safety. So, this is a summary of 2018 to 2022, so five years of collision data that we get from the state. And we start here to start thinking and looking at if there are problem areas or areas that stand out as issues or opportunities for safety improvements. We saw no, in the data reviewed, saw no fatal or, and few serious collision injuries reported, which is a good starting place. There are some higher collision areas, and those tend to be around higher volume intersections. So, kind of makes sense, but gives us a starting point when looking at those intersections. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, kind of going back to the vehicular LOS standards, the current standard in the city of Duval is a C for all roadways in the city, and then a D along SR 203 or Main Street. There are no changes at this point planned to the vehicular LOS standards as part of this process. So, this is the information that we'll be measuring those intersection operations against.
I guess one thing, one before you jump, maybe, yeah, is what we're measuring too when we describe, you know, the city's standards level service C. We're measuring intersection delay, so it would be, that's the stopwatch, right? And so, Jess, maybe describe a little bit what, what that is, like intersection delay and how it's measured.
Sure. So, this is one of the metrics that we use when we're studying intersections to understand how weather operating. And then, basically, depending on the type of traffic controls, like a stop sign or a stoplight, we'll kind of have different parameters for the delay that's allowable. But it gives us kind of bracketed numbers that correspond to an LOS letter. So, if there's, like, for instance, like, if you're looking at a traffic signal, like, anything that's less than 10 seconds of delay on average for the vehicle would be an A. But that's not always the most efficient use of resources. So, we think about that, too, as we go through and evaluate the intersections and how they're operating.
So, one, one thing to, is that, you know, the difference between the city, you know, the inters, the level service standard for all city facilities, and then along 203 is level service D, that's because the state and PSRC define the standard for state facilities. And so, they've defined level service D for all kind of state facilities in rural areas, which SR 203 in this area is considered. And so, the, the city, you know, has the ability to kind of designate their, you know, their own level service standard. And so, it's been set at C, and we're not proposing any changes at this time. But it's something to revisit or kind of, you know, look at it in future plan updates. Next slide.
We go, oh, perfect, thank you. So, one of the other things we've done recently is to update and, and add recent pedestrian facilities have been added as part of development. So, this gives us an idea of where the current sidewalk facilities and bike lanes are in the city. And this helps us identify some of those gaps in the network and where we could integrate transit and bike facilities and try to connect to trail facilities and help people have kind of alternative options for getting around in the city and incentivizing those different modes. So, this is, will help formulate the basis then for when we're looking at the, the pedestrian and the bike levels of service for the future conditions. Can you do the next slide? Then, this is just a quick view of the transit that's currently available. In the city of Duval, we've got King County Metro that runs a couple of routes through Snoqualmie Valley Transit. And then, we throw the Microsoft connector on there. There's not a lot of information available as far as like the times. We know it stops at the church, but we don't have a lot of control over it. So, it's more kind of a resource and acknowledging that it's available, but limited ability to make changes. And then, this is the existing vehicle LOS based on data that were collected in the fall of 2023. So, this is showing that all of the intersections in the city currently meet the adopted LOS C or D standard with pretty, like, minor delays at a lot of the intersections we see that are operating at A, and then some along 203 that are and now like C to D range.
Oh, I think we have a question.
Oh, sorry, I can't, I can't see.
Councilwoman Nappin, go ahead.
Yo, I was curious, at what point of the day did that level, level of standard, level of service, was that taken that day? Or was it the same for all intersections, or was it intersection-specific that you chose the worst of A?
Sure. So, this is, the standard is for the PM peak hour, and it's the 1 PM peak hour inside of the four to six two-hour window. So, when we collect data, data are collected from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on mid-weekday, so a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And then, we use the one peak hour within that window for our analysis.
Okay, did you gather data in the morning, just out of curiosity? I'm just thinking of that where Big Rock intersects with Main Street, 203. That one's probably drier in the morning as people are leaving town. I don't know, just a thought. I'm just curious.
We have some daily, we did some daily traffic data counts, but we don't have any specific AM peak hour, peak period turning movement counts, which is what we use for the individual intersection analysis.
But we do have, what I think Jessica was referring to is like the, the tube counts that you see, the, the kind of rubber tubes on, on the road. I don't know how many of those that we have, but they would capture sort of the, kind of the profile, the daily volume profile on roadways where they're, they've been collected. And so, we will collect, you know, typically a handful of those so that we can understand what the peak hours are and what the demands are in different parts of the city during different parts of the day. So, we could, we could dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, we.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jessica.
No, that's okay. We do have a tube count along Big Rock Road that we collected as part of our initial data collection. So, we could look at kind of just how the, the general volumes compare between the AM, the PM, and daily. We can look at that.
Good question.
Right, please continue.
Okay, um, can you go to the next slide? Um, so as Patrick mentioned, all of this is layering on. And thinking about how this looks in the future when we think about those land use changes. Um, and and new developments, how those will impact the network. So we've started kind of that forecasting process now. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, we've got a couple of slides on the land use where we're anticipating the growth. Um, so this is the dwelling unit, um, the. The change in that dwelling unit of growth. Um, so for this, the majority of the growth. We're seeing um from the data is kind of in that south central portion of town. I think where a lot of the new development has actually occurred recently. Um, and if we go to the next slide, we can look at where we're anticipating the jobs growth. Um, so it's kind of more in the eastern part of town and then some of downtown is where we're anticipating to see the the job growth.
So I guess one thing to point out with these maps, these are, you know, the the. The geographies that you see, the blocks are what we call transportation analysis zones and. Those are, it's a geography that's really just used for uh the city's travel demand model that we use to forecast and so. We basically take a. Forecast land use that um the land use uh consultant develops and then translate that into um. Uh. Household dwelling units and jobs. And then those are converted into trips that are then modeled onto the network. So uh what you're seeing now is just sort of the land use. Part of that, but it kind of does, you know, you can kind of see where growth is forecast in in different parts of the city.
And we have one question, Councilmember Roster.
You know, thank you. I just had a question, this sort of the eastern blue block, that's an area where I don't anticipate they'll have. Growth, so I was just curious, and you don't have to answer them in this call, but I would. You know, that's that's low density. Or like until sort of undeveloped right now and and what the reference point for the forty to sixty two. Job growth, sort of on the east side being required.
Do you want me to try and help, Patrick?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
So, good question. What I do know is that the. Information that was done for land use was done by another influence and was given to Trampoco. This is the first time that we've seen these maps. So I thought the same thing was hot. Um, yeah, we um, we do have some of those questions to refine some of these KVs and the job growth. So, good question.
Yeah, that's exactly, these are very, these are much, these are still very draft and like she, we're just. Kind of starting our forecasting efforts, that's why we're not able to actually show you, you know. You know, maps to show kind of where the vehicles are going yet, because we haven't gotten that far. Um. But as Larissa said, well, you know, definitely go back and and check um. These maps and make sure um that the land use growth is in the right places.
That would be a question, Councilmember Sheever.
Yeah, the, just another comment or perhaps a question, but the the way it looks to me is the the uh. Is the south eastern uh dark area you show exactly outside, so you see one. Uh, and uh, that would mean that there's uh, you know, annexation. Uh, anticipated uh for that as as well. Uh, which is interesting that some of your white areas are also outside of the city limits, but I don't see any. You know, they're they're white, you know, anticipated for, you know. Zero job growth, zero annexation. So I don't see what the world, you know, and this is a good comment for you, because I guess comments for us. I don't see the line of reason behind it uh at all.
Another question.
Did anyone want to, or is there just a comment, is that kind of responsible for that at all? We can just.
Yeah, the only comment I, we'll, we'll look into it. Uh, I'm, we'd have to, you know, like. As Larissa mentioned, we'd have to coordinate with the other land use consultant to understand kind of what the. Kind of what what the land use, that might have been a miscoding or or something else too, so may- maybe it's not intentional.
Councilmember Natalie.
Yeah, the other area that is standing out to me is where the school district owns the parcel. It's um. The south, the southern portion of the map towards the center. It's next to the To Brother's project, which is a large residential development, but um. They, the school district owns that site and intends to put a school there, which would be. Uh, significantly higher than what it's currently shown for potential job growth. And that's something that um we brought up before as we do transportation planning is to. To keep in mind that there will be a school side of there, school classes, parents dropping off. So as we um. Look at volumes, that might be something to consider. I don't know if that's something Larissa can take a note of and maybe.
Yes, I'm digging for my pen, I'm, I'm busy.
Thank you so much.
Again, next slide.
Um, yeah, okay, so as part of the um multimodal integration into the plan. We're working on developing what we would like the future pedestrian and bike networks to look like. Like, um, so this is kind of where we started with the the pedestrian network. Um, it does build off of some of the current um code information. Um, this also isn't necessarily saying there can't, can't or won't be sidewalks on other roadways. It's just that this is. Um, seen as more of a network connectivity and opportunities for those facilities. Um, and to connect to other higher density uses or transit or trails or bike lanes. Um, and schools. Um, so that's this network. And then on the next slide. We've. Started developing what that future bicycle network um may look like too. Um, and so then, once we kind of finalize these maps, we'll take a look. At where we have system gaps for bike lanes or for sidewalks. Um, and that's where we'll start developing the project list to include these non-motorized um facilities.
And so I guess that, I guess one thing to to kind of note and how this will relate to levels of service is that where um. Those um. The kind of the completeness of the network becomes the level of service standard for pet and bike, you know, related to these, these networks. And the projects that are identified to fill the gaps then um are eligible to go on to the the city's transportation impact fee program. And so. Um, as development comes in, impact fees are paid and um those uh fees can go to implement these pet and bike improvements that are in the comp plan.
Yeah, and then uh the final kind of forecasting draft element that we have is. Um, kind of the LOS that's. Um, associated with the land use that was shown previously, so this will get updated if there are changes made to the land use, but this is. Kind of what we're initially looking at for the LOS. Um, for the intersections, um, the majority of intersections are anticipated to continue to meet that LOS C. Or D standard, um, with two intersections in the northwest part of the city, kind of. Falling down into the F category. One is the um Woodinville Duval Road. Bridge intersection with two oh three, and then the other is the Cherry Valley Road with two oh three. So. We, as we progress through this process, we'll look at potential improvements um at those intersections as well and. Um, that that'll be another component that gets added to they or worked into the project list for the TIF and for the, for the plan. Um, and then if there aren't other questions about this, we just have next steps and then we can.
Um, I think that's it for us. Or maybe, uh, Jennifer, is that a question?
Councilmember Natalie?
Yeah, hopefully this is a good question, but it's been brought up before and I'm not sure if it ended up getting integrated, but. One thing that has been noticed is that there, the, the previous model didn't have an ability to. Um, account for queuing capacity. And so there's quite a few places, well, at least two specifically that I can think of, where there isn't enough capacity. To get people in the queuing lane to take the left. And so then there's an impeding of through traffic. And so the model doesn't necessarily account that there's bottlenecks at an intersection due to that queuing. Not having enough room to queue. And. I had heard that there was maybe a a way to model that, but it's slightly more sophisticated. Anyway, I wasn't sure if that had been looked at because both the terms at. Woodinville Duval um and two oh three and then Big Rock. And two oh three, both of those have kind of very, very limited queuing space.
We haven't looked at queuing um yet. That's something we could talk. With, we can look at and and talk with the city about. That can be a potential for um some of those plan improvements as well. Um, they get added on to the list.
Though there, I think there will be some locations where we we go into a little deeper, where we would evaluate queuing and, you know, the need for more queue storage. Um, to. Because I think that's, I think the the, it's the question's related to how. Some, um, you know, some of the intersections maybe are going underreported because vehicles aren't. You know, they're, they're, they're not even, um, they're in the queue that doesn't allow them to be processed by the intersection, so they're not. It's not part of the calculation. Um, and so uh more detailed analysis needs to occur to understand the queuing. Um, which is kind of the the backup of cars. Before they even get to the intersection. So I think and um, yeah, in our, in the future work, we'll, we'll look at, we'll do a little deeper dive in queuing at specific locations where we identify that as a problem.
Yeah, we just have the last slide if you, oh, sorry.
Yeah, and then, so just next steps, um, we'll uh, we're going to finalize the multimodal level service. We'll have a a series of maps. Um, that uh kind of are related to those networks that we um. Showed earlier, um, that identify the gaps, um, and then a list of projects um that are kind of result of. Both the vehicular standard as well as the pet and bike gap projects. Um, and then a, you know, a draft planning document, um. That all kind of uh summarize that work, um. Satisfy the requirements of the Growth Management Act and PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, and and it'll be uh packaged in a transportation element and a transportation master plan. And so the the schedule essentially is the kind of, we're um kind of coordinating closely um with the city's comprehensive plan consultant and so um. You know, I think um in the summer, we'll have a draft plan and so that's kind of the timeline for when those things would be in front of council next.
Well, thank you very much. Any last questions or comments? All right. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Sheever.
Uh, go ahead, I really have a question, but I was encouraged to see uh. You're including, in your considerations, including autonomous and connected uh vehicles in that. I uh. I really think in the next ten, fifteen years. Uh, not only are autonomous vehicles going to become more and more common, but along with that, uh, connected vehicles. Vehicles that are nailed together, leading to more efficient use of our existing infrastructure. On roadways and also an increased uh increased safety. But as we see more and more of that. The existing infrastructure, I think, will uh be uh be able to handle uh much more capacity for.
Yes, the the, just to kind of um, kind of respond to that comment, the plan will kind of help frame the policy decisions around some of these emerging technologies such as autonomous and connected vehicles. And what that will mean, you know, as the city um evaluates transportation improvements uh looking forward.
All right, that looks like it's it. So thank you all very much for the update. We appreciate you coming tonight.
All right, thanks all.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. So that we're going to move on to our presentation on a policy regarding temporary time. Go to the um, or the something.
Good evening, Councilmember Mayor. Uh, this is Azela Chavez. I am the Associate Planner and Firm Specialist at the Community Development Department. And today I'll present to you our proposed amendment to the temporary time uh section of our cycle. So, um, again, as I said, uh, the present the proposed provision to this um section of the code. We also like to continue the discussion on the importance of regulating temporary time. This is a discussion that we started back in uh twenty twenty-one, so it's been quite a while. Uh, we will receive your feedback and answer any questions that you have. Our agenda for today is uh go over a brief introduction, go over the importance of uh regulating temporary time. Uh, the revisions that um we have worked on in the past uh month. Uh, give you a proposal for new time types and next step on the process to update this policy. Uh, so what is the temporary time? Our municipal code gives us two uh definitions of uh temporary time. One is a sign that is designed to be displaced for a limited amount of time and is not permanently placed or fixed. Uh, such as to prevent its removal. Uh, the other one is very similar. Uh, basically, a sign that cannot be removed and anything that is not a permanent. Currently, this is what our uh code um. Has for temporary time, uh commercial A word, uh grant open display. Construction signs, political signs, real estate, community events, community banners, and missing time. These are uh very, very um like uh sign codes of other jurisdictions. And next slide. Uh, so why are we updating our code? So in this section of the temporary time, we want to comply with the Ray versus Stonehillberg uh Supreme Court case, which um. As a preliminary standard that regulates time placement, this applies to non-commercial signage. So that means our current sign um uh code is unconstitutional, so we cannot fully enforce it. Uh, we also want to establish general guidelines. Certified permit requirement, because right now there are some gray areas, uh rather like categories, and reflect current zoning designation. Uh, the importance of this update, uh, as I mentioned, to withstand uh constitutional challenges. Um, provide for clear and concise time quality. Uh, right now, the format of this section is all over the place. Uh, so we want to establish um. A quality today is easier to read, not only for us staff and um. Uh, elected officials, but also like all the community, anyone who's going to work for them, if you understand. What the requirements are, uh, what are the regulations and how can I get them. Um, also, we would like to um, both important to this update, to be able to enforce our regulation. Uh, accomplish the purpose of our sign code and allow for commercial and non-commercial signage uh to enhance business and non-business. Uh, our current purpose uh regulating time is to comply with citywide visioning, building design and the comprehensive plan. Uh, this, the purpose of the time code, these are the goals that we want. Uh, this, the purpose of the sign code, these are the goals that we want to achieve as a city. Uh, support places for gathering, increase social interaction, encourage the community, support commercial services, um regulate time that results in peer development. Uh, we get to how we want to establish or like allow. Uh, we also want to prevent uh clutter, and we also want to allow communication while avoiding any type of movement or at least try to prevent. Uh, so big picture, what are proposed revisions? So we're adding a purpose to the uh temporary time section. Our current purpose in the entire um quality people's stand, we just want to be more specific to uh mention non-commercial uh requirements. Uh, we want to establish general regulations that will apply to all temporary signage, so you don't have to go into each category and remember, oh, yeah, what's going to be like, everything will be under one. Uh, we want to revise the time definition, again, to comply with this uh content neutrality. Uh, and that includes also adding uh time, place, and manner for each sign. Uh, this will make more sense once I show you more examples. Uh, we also want to create two different like categories, uh commercial and non-commercial things. That is something that is becoming um very common among like regulations, law enforcement. Um, we want to implement a consistent format and as diagram on the table, again, to make things easier for everyone to read and understand. Uh, our proposed um purpose for this uh section is to recognize and protect the use of the public right of way as a forum for non-commercial speech and recognize free speech rights by regulating temporary times in a content neutral format. Uh, for general standards, we are proposing um regulations that prevent faster destinations. Uh, we also want to establish blocking provisions, uh for example, not uh not having temporary times in uh traffic mediums. That is a safety hazard for uh people on the road and people actually playing. So that's just like a very specific example. Uh, we also want to restrict that burn impact pedestrian. Again, like if there are a couple or like a lot of like A board signs in sidewalk and there's someone using a wheelchair or something similar, it's maybe hard for them to navigate. So that kind of situation is coming created, and we want to prevent this. And also prevent damage to utilities and vegetation, like you never know if you go and play the sign and then there's vegetation there. Um, irrigation, whatever, so that can be also another issue. So again, this is our current um classification for time. And what we're proposing uh next is is to uh, we're not eliminating this, but we're redefining this uh type of sign. So all this uh current signage will be under the new categories. Um, we are proposing a new type, which is pedestal sign. I will give more detail in a minute. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, we will have grants opening displays, which are basically banners, but currently they're not defined as that, so we are working on that. Uh, construction signs uh can be into either commercial, single post, double post, or triple post sign. Real estate signs are basically very similar. We're just like redefining this type of sign based on the materials and the size, not what they contain. Uh, and we're extending that into uh commercial signs. Just to try to keep our um our policy consistent throughout like both types of signs, commercial and non-commercial. Uh, community event that will either be A board or uh banners uh and non-commercial tech signs will be what we know right now as political. Um, and then a note on community banners and miscellaneous signs, uh if you go to the next slide, please. So community banners can be regulated under a separate policy. Right now, they are mentioned in our current um uh in our in the municipal, but we will create a separate policy that will establish um more specific guidelines. These are the signs that go across the street, and they basically advertise community-wide events. And this is a definition that they mentioned. Uh, they are uh civil, cultural, educational, philanthropic, or service opportunities for the community. These are very specific requirements for the signs that we want to distribute. And right now, we have three locations for this type of banner uh across Main Street um on the corner both on William Bill Duval Road and on the pedestrian called the streetlight. And next one, please. Uh, mural. This will be removed from temporary time. Uh, this could be up for discussion, but we consider morals not as a temporary time. It's more like an art piece. Uh, commercial and non-commercial sites, um that will be a division that will need to be created. And this will be reviewed by the Duval Council. So that's why we're removing murals from our current sign code. Uh, so now let's talk about content neutrality. Um, you should not have to read the sign to determine, determine how to regulate. So that's basically what this means. Something that is not neutral, the sign content, the purpose of the sign, and who is putting the sign. So those are some guidelines that we have been given uh throughout these years since uh the decision was made. So examples of content neutral requirements will be time, like where are you placing the site, place, uh the number of times, the location of the site, and the manner, uh which size uh that it has, the material, uh it is made, the installation, like that type of stuff that we can.
When you, I just wanna check, are you giving questions throughout the presentation? Did you wanna, yeah, okay, Councilor Schiefer.
The content neutrality, does that only apply to non-commercial signs?
Um, right now, we are trying to make it apply to everything, but in reality, it's just for non-commercial. We have uh cities and jurisdictions have uh more um room for um regulating commercial signs, so it's not a trick as with non-commercial.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor Schubel.
Um, do you have or whether you have examples? Neutral, content neutral?
Uh, yes, there are a couple of images throughout the presentation. Yeah, go ahead, okay. So for temporary commercial signs, uh this is what we're proposing. Uh, it's the thing that uh appeared before, now we can start the diagrams. Uh, A board, pedestal signs, uh wall banner, single post, double post, and triple post. For non-commercial, we will have state signs or yard signs, A board, and uh wall banner. Next. Um, for temporary commercial signs, uh we have a sign that advertises products, goods, businesses, or services or contains information on behalf of a company or individual, so they intend it to making a profit. So that's the main difference with non-commercial signs, which uh if you go to the next slide, um is a sign that expresses non-commercial speech or other ideological or uh philosophical methods. Um, some examples like clean after your dog, thank you uh for participating, um free vehicle temptation, like that kind of like um messages that is not for profit free. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, so in this type of format, so right now, we have um the type of signs with uh mention of like zoning allowances sometimes. And then we have specifications, sometimes we have the timing, maybe we'll have a definition, maybe we'll have a location. So our uh signs have the permit requirements. So what we want to propose is to have a more consistent format where all types of signs will have these characteristics. Um, size, mentions, materials, duration, quantity, location, and the current square. Again, make trying to make sure that everyone that reads uh that quality gets the information that they're looking for. And next, and we are also adding new tables. These tables leave the type of signs that we will have, whether a permit is required and and the turning allowance. Um, that is a very um easy way to try to find information without having to go into place. All parallel. Uh, Keith.
Councilor Schiefer.
Uh, the uh the differentiation between a single post and double post. So my question has to do with the 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 these are the posts, but the wires, the little wire signs. Uh, most of those are double. Uh, and and for, you know, political stuff and and uh uh things like that, are do they under this and those three wires, so if they have two wires sticking to the ground, they have to have a permit?
Um, hmm, well, uh, we are proposing that those type of signs that you're referring to, those are full uh state or yard sign. Uh, we are thinking for single post and double post and triple post, uh more of the like wood um type of signs that are bigger. We have a size requirement for that, so we're making that distinction. Yeah, so they.
I think that needs to be clarified, because we go back a slider to show you the post, the two little wires sticking to the ground, but it calls those posts, right? So so I think that those need to be clarified.
Okay, that's, that's good. Yeah, because under the definition, the new definitions that we are uh proposing, we have very specific time requirement, uh size requirement.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, that would be something that will be.
Okay, thank you.
And next, um, yes, this is what you're referring to. So state signs. Uh, these will be signs made of lightweight materials, allowed for up to ninety days, not permanently required. If they're in the right of way, we are proposing that they're located fifteen feet away from intersection and they they will be for non-commercial features. Uh, the definition has a more a specific size requirement, so this will be up to six feet uh of area. So that's the maximum size that uh size area that they can have. Um, next one. A board. Um, these are two message banners in the shape of a name to be displayed during business hours or event hours only, so we are requiring them to like be removed urgently. Um, that's something that we currently have, we're just kicking up. Uh, we require a permit and uh insurance fees to cover the city for any damages that could happen because they will be placed in the right uh that will at a city level, at label. We already have that. Uh, every time we um inspect a sign, just to make sure it's uh complies with location and site, we add this label to the sign, so that way we know which uh signs are permitted. And and we will not remove them in case that there is a not complete, and then we will outside and take out some signs. Uh, this will be allowed in residential areas, but only for properties that are under development or uh available for state or rent. So this is what we currently know and know as real estate sign. So we're just redefining, okay, A board signs, that are in real estate are under this uh category. And next one, please. So, question, Councilor Schubel.
Yeah, there is an email from Ms. uh in Calgary that you're, oh, sorry, close. Concerned that the proposed amendments to the sign code will prohibit the use of open house A boards. But there I see you have it available for sale or rent. I'm a little confused at why this email came in. Is there a
Yeah, let me be quick to the pinpoint in it, because I actually have some questions for council, or we have some questions for council. But then, because we do want to start to address that question. Yes, we would allow it under our new code, but there's a limitation that it's on site. And they would like them to be throughout the town. And so we'll go back and talk about it.
Would it be helpful if you wanna just hold questions until the very end, to finish getting through it or? For just for that topic?
For that topic. Thank you.
Um, pedestal signs, this is a new type of sign that we're proposing. Uh, these are typically used uh outside of restaurants to show a menu, uh the menu. Uh, so they're made of real materials. Uh, same as A board signs, they are displayed during business hours only, so they will have to be stored overnight. Uh, the uh, we also require a permit and insurance. Uh, we will also add the label, uh as I mentioned, it's sensitive. Next slide. Uh, wall banner. Um, new categories, but it's already seen. We are making the qualification that these are wall banners, because banners that go over fences are different and freestanding banners are all from other sites. So we're specifying wall banners. Uh, that is a sign made of flexible materials, no inclusion framework. We are continuing to be displaced four times per year uh by fourteen day period. Uh, we require a permit. And this is currently under grant opening display, but that makes things confusing because the current category doesn't call banners specifically, so we're just admitting that. And next. Uh, single post signs, uh one of our new categories. Uh, this is made of durable materials attached to a freestanding pole. This will be allowed on property for sale or rent for one year. Uh, we will not require a permit and um as I mentioned, probably used for real estate. Uh, we have size, specific size definition for this. Next, please. Uh, double post signs. Uh, this is again durable material, two freestanding poles, also allowed for one year. We will allow one extension, uh will require a permit and construction signs will typically enter into this type of sign. Uh, that way you also will require a permit, so that they are not there forever and they're next, please. Um, triple posts, similar to the previous two ones, but this has triple. Again, one year, allowed, uh one extension, uh we require a permit and it's for, will be for many things, but construction signs is what's currently under our code. Um, so what are the next steps for this um quality? So right now, it's under review uh here at City Council. Uh, next, we will send that draft to the Department of Commerce for review. Uh, then we will have a revised draft based on all the feedback and the feedback we get from uh Commerce. It will, it will go through uh super review, and then we will have a committee hearing and running commission, another one here at City Council, and then hopefully get approval and others. Uh, we are hoping this goes through in spring or summer. Um, those statements for that. Uh, next one. So as Lara mentioned, we have uh questions for planning commissioner, council. Um, we are asking if um uh council would like to add more to the purpose of our temporary time. Um, currently, uh with the proposed uh revision, only one A board is allowed for property, either under construction or sale or rent. And that relates to the email that you will receive. Uh, they are asking for more time. Um, A board advertising properties, uh we can establish a limit on the location and the distance. Uh, because right now, the politics stands, they can place this uh A board sign close to the property or the sidewalk that is close to the property, but they cannot go, let's say, all the way to Main Street. So that's something that we're asking council and planning commission to think about. Um, do we want to regulate commercial and non-commercial signs uh signs same way? Um, which is what we're proposing right now. Uh, another note, uh if instead of a permit for some types of signs, we will consider a yearly sign agreement. Uh, we can provide an example at each meeting, but that's an idea. So instead of having them uh fill out a permit for each sign, maybe they just have one document that covers them for an entire year. Um, and then how many times should we allow for one type of sign? Uh, example is the open house sign uh for realtors. Uh, on site, how many uh on site, how many off site? Again, just things that uh we are bringing here to council. Discuss and think about. Um, next one, please. Um, will be coming today. Uh, what was mentioned, um, um, email to City Council this week from the real estate industry. And lastly, uh what were some of your thoughts regarding this? Um, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump in really quick with my question. One of the things I brought up last time, it's been off, we've talked about this, is we do have at least one business I know that at night has a projected place. Is we do have at least one business I know of that at night has a projected place. Um, and it didn't see that represented anywhere in here, but it's also, um, there's sort of a conflict there. Because temporary signs can't be illuminated, that's one of the criteria, which I, in my mind, yeah, I don't want like a wood up aboard, you know? And I think that's what it's going for, but where you have someone who maybe has a low impact creative way. And it's just for the short hours, because they're open at night, is that something that we would put in this policy? And then if so, what kinds of things would we put around it? Because obviously, you know, this is like a slow rotating logo, which is nice, but I wouldn't want something flashing that gets disorienting to somebody walking on the sidewalk. So is that something that could go into this policy?
Uh, it's something that other jurisdictions have included in their policy, and yes, they have some restrictions on like zoning. For example, they can only go into commercial areas, uh timing too, um. Size and even like more uh specific requirements like the intensity of the light. Uh, so yeah, it's something that if uh there's an imprint, we could consider adding uh and and make a proposal of that. Or we can uh get into other processes to take full time. It's not on the top of my mind, but I remember it being mentioned somewhere, but uh.
Thank you. Yeah, I personally would like to propose we look at something, a simple version of adding that, just because I know there is one business in downtown that those people like. And that's done so well, and if we didn't include that, I believe they would have stopped using that, so it is something to think about. Anyone else? Uh, council member Mercer?
Uh, first, a bit more broader question, I don't know how you all collect sort of feedback on questions world there.
Like, one thing that I was gonna add is, we're not asking you to answer those questions. We want you to think about them, and then we're gonna come back to our next meeting. Because we do wanna show you some opportunities, like give you an example of. Um, the sign agreement that wouldn't require a permit. So we are looking at, do we do that for all temporary signs? I'm not sure. For some of the temporary signs that like happen multiple times, um, that is not per se one that. What we would consider more permit is out every day, you know, since there's poles that in and out every day, that would probably be still. A permit, but those ones that are occasional, it would probably be done under a simple agreement. And we uh, we do have an example of that, we're discussing, bring it forward.
So my question is more, just sort of a comment, I like the approach of allowing commercial to, non-commercial, just for simplicity. Obviously, we'll talk more about that at the next meeting in terms of specific feedback. I was curious, first, I'm similar to the uh illuminated sign that was referenced. There are some other creative signs that we don't see as often here, maybe the big wavy man sign or the balloon signs. Are those covered by any type of like miscellaneous, or are those just simply prohibited because they're not explicitly called out in the, in?
So currently they are underground opening displays, uh with the new um. With the new revision, uh they are not mentioned, uh if this is something that. Who go there as a miscellaneous time, it can be included, uh for the.
I don't wanna create that sort of additional.
Yeah.
You know, for an outlier, but I was just more curious in terms of how those work. I don't know that we specifically from a business perspective have some of those industries that particularly, you know, auto places that can see those. But but that was sort of my general thinking, and I think we answered the questions, I think.
Anyone else? Uh, council member Hubel? Do we have a prohibition on um neon lighting? Well, in Old Town, yes, in Old Town, you know, we don't allow any um direct illumination. We only allow what we call ex, like essentially a doosnap lighting. In other districts outside of that, like Nick, our McSue sister, it's a commercial though. Uh, we do allow lighting, but neon is not that one of those that the city, at least for. As long as I've been here, has allowed neon signs, so. Um, yeah, and there, and we're, and it's kind of also focused, we're only looking at temporary type signs. Right, not, not. And it's not permanent, we'll see like, what I would call like small neon signs that are like open or closed.
Right.
And those are accessory signs, they're small, so and they kind of on and off, so we just, you know, go about our business of the day. Yeah. At the next meeting, we are gonna wanna talk about the real estate signs, because that was an item that came up. One of our challenges is, you know, we, we can treat commercial temporary signs differently than. The non-commercial. Um, but what we were doing at least for kind of more ease of enforcement and just kind of overall regulation. Was to treat everything the same way, but you know, but there's pros and cons about that, so we need to have that discussion. About what those are, you know, right now, the real estate industry, whether it's like our homeowners or even our. You know, just our regular real estate agents doing an open house, you know, on the weekend or during a weekday. They would only be allowed under this code, the one onsite one, so that would be a big change to how we have regulated them historically.
Council member double?
So, um, what about Cora's? Certainly, that, we're.
So those actually. Uh, those are on their what is called incidental signs. So they are not uh specifically falling into this section of the code, but on the entire sample quality. Uh, and they, they are called incidental signs, uh they can go up to like four feet inside of area. And that's what how we will um, uh, break of night, those type of signs, so they're, they're extended from like. Uh, permit department, but they for a free list.
But do you allow it also more than one?
Um, as long as they are not cluttering, uh and also there are, there is another section in normally. But also that specifies, uh that they cannot go into uh street fog, if anyone, uh streetlight. Um, so yeah, there are some from um regulations there, so there's not a big number mentioned either.
Any questions or comments? And then just to clarify, director comments, you basically the public comments that council members talk about, you're saying at the next, the next time you said that. You'd be ready to get into that discussion.
I'd like, you know, go to be ready.
Yeah, okay.
Go into that discussion, and then, you know, we'll bring forward a couple of items for that discussion. But at the end of the day, it really is guidance from planning mission and council on what he would. Would look at to do long term.
Other questions or comments from council?
Uh, council member. This is one, I should remember, we talked about this in English, but just a point of clarification. Um, the church aid wasn't there out on, on the weekend, are those considered commercial or non-commercial? We're gonna follow that for you with the content into a policy of.
Very non-commercial.
Okay, great.
Anything else on this item? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We have one item left, we're a little short on time, remember we're gonna ask her to even show if you'd like to push the council to busking, but the busking. Or is it maybe two and three minutes? Oh, we wanna get started, and that means to have some discussion, then we have, okay, let's do it, go for it. Oh, so we're doing our presentation on proposed ordinance on busking, there's a city administrator. Uh, so just really quick, um, presentation, if you have a proposed ordinance in a council package tonight. This is a first touch. Uh, we did at the last meeting when we adopted a new B schedule. We did include a B or a busking permit. Should council decide that they wanted to allow busking, and the next step then was to bring a faulty board. Uh, to include this. Um, so what has been included, there's three main categories in the proposed ordinance. And in the package, we've included a lot of different jurisdictions that we looked at. Um, to uh for our clerk, uh we prepared to come up with the proposed draft, so. What you see first is the permit requirement, so um age, there's a background check and length of permit for busking, so. No one under thirteen and under eighteen, you'd need to have a kind of written parental consent to be busking. Um, particularly if you think about the, you know, if the proposed hours are ten to ten, um, it is out in public in a right of way. Want to make sure that. You know, our younger folks that wanna take advantage of performing uh at our parks and in our. Should we do so? Uh, we would also require a watching state control background check. Um, particularly as we think about buskers who would um be performing in places like parks and in summer stage. Um, we would want to make sure that unnecessary background checks are happening. And then the length of permit right now is supposed to be six months, so um somebody who wanted to. Bust throughout the summer, the summer stage, a six month permit would allow them to kind of seasonally be able to do that activity. Um, this is meant to address busking in parks and in cities right of ways. Um, there are free speech and First Amendment considerations regarding each in public places. This is really meant to address performing in our parks and performing in cities. It's not meant to address. Beach that happens in um, or on our, in our parks. So, um, it's an important distinction that we'll go through probably a fair amount of legal review before we finally get to a final policy on this. Um, so there are some prohibitions and restrictions for busking activities that have been included, these are all. Well, I shouldn't say they're all over debate, some are important from a health safety perspective. Um, and some, you know, certainly in council can um and should apply on, you know, what kind of prohibitions or restrictions you wanna have. So you can't block passage of the public through a public area, you can't block private property. We'll need some content restrictions, and there are content restrictions written in, this will need additional review. But we've said nothing obscene, nothing lude in terms of performances in our parks and in the right ways. There is a noise restriction, so it can be really noisy, no weapons or flames, axes, saws, that kind of thing. Again, potentially open for debate, I mean, there are cities that have actuarial competitions. Um, so take a look, see where your comfort level is. Um, but you know, ideally, we don't want people harming themselves or others while they're busking. Um, restrictions on performing under the influence of illegal or controlled substances. Uh, we have proposed that you can't correct a consent or a structure as part of your performance. We're asking you to clean up after yourself, the proposed hours are ten AM to ten PM. And then there's some other legal restrictions, and then the other part of it, um, the ordinance has. Uh, legal issues in that meaning copyright, liberial, and illegitimacy for them, these towns, these property to. Um, city, we want to make sure that we don't have a lot of legal liability that this point back to.
Uh, council. One more quick question, I don't see it in here, and I don't know if it's again, it's an issue, but if you're considering. Are there any prohibitions on distribution, whether it's cereal, whether it's food, band, things of that sort? Because I know sometimes we'll see that as free fairs, and there's a potential safety thing if someone is giving out food, or even sort of a distribution involved again that. Free speech, but under this busking, that's covered in, you know.
So. Under our definitions, we would define it um. For what is the busking, I'll have to go back and reread it, it would not include food. Um, or it's, so we've defined busking as. Acting performing in a public area for voluntary donations, including but not limited to the following activities. Acting, singing, musical instruments, whether amplified or not, hand line, juggling, magic dancing, or siding. Does not include the production of items for sale. Um, so it really, then we have performing, it's interchangeable with busking, but again. Really around music, dance, playing instruments, um, I mean, I suppose there's forming element of food.
We're gonna ensure for music, they're not selling music, but they're distributing something.
Yeah, it's meant to be for voluntary donations as opposed to selling, which would require. A different type of permit or like potentially. The really meant more for kind of street performance than it is for distributing or selling. Council member Naflan and then Shaffer?
I would like to ask that we have further conversation about whether amplification of sound is allowed. I was just reviewing some of the policies and uh for maybe a bustling city, you know, maybe you would um. Need some sound amplification, but I feel like Duval might be more similar to a Port Townsend, which does not, I think it was Port Townsend. That does not allow sound amplification, I just think when I'm in the park, acoustic uh. Performance would be enjoyable, any sound amplification, I would not enjoy, I, I go to a park. Um, and not expect that, and even, you know, on Main Street, if there's a neighboring business, I don't think a neighboring business would want to have. A sound amplified um, performance, um, you know, right outside their business. So I, I'd really like to have further conversation about whether that would be allowed.
Council member Shaffer?
Yeah, I, I, I have a strong concern about allowing uh busking at all. Uh, period, and I think that's what this council needs to consider first and foremost. Uh, first of all, there, nothing in the regulation really would find a good distinction between uh busking and panhandling. You know, we, we, we've all seen uh people playing the accordion or some other instrument, instrument with a, you know, with a donation. Bucket next to them, uh, and that's, and it's, and that's, maybe I missed it, so, you know, we could say I'm, you know, I. Put a little sign up, I'm for, I have starving children, et cetera, et cetera, to solicit uh, you know, donations. In my mind, this panhandling is not uh entertaining uh people. And this is my understanding, this would, would allow it. Secondly, uh, the city gets no tax return from this, people are donating uh cash. Uh, the city technically isn't gonna see an income uh from that, I don't see an advantage other than a potential entertainment value. Although even that, in my mind, is uh, is, is debatable. But uh, lack of distinction between busking, panhandling, uh. And uh, you know, potential neg, oh, the other negative benefit to the city is uh requiring increase in enforcement. Uh, you know, this sounds too loud, or, you know, we have too many people gathering in a particular area, or somebody incites. Uh, you know, then someone makes a political statement whether they're busking and it defends other people. Uh, this will, will increase to be caused due to an increase in enforcement level. Uh, I personally am not in favor of allowing busking at all in, in Duval. So again, I think this council needs to consider that question first.
All right, so we've got one minute left, you wanna? But I will address one of the comments, uh, actually two. Um, first, there is, so I should say, city staff doesn't, um. This was not on our agenda really, or our, we're gonna bring to council, we did have a request for a busker. Um, to perform before summer stage, which prompted the question. Um, there is an economic, uh, economic revenue generating element to this. Because the licensed busker would have to get a permit, and a permit has cost, you'd have to pay for her. And council approved that permit, being not necessarily busking, but the ability to charge a fee. Um, and I think it was fifty dollars, I'll, I'll have to go back a moment, so last council, we did approve a fee for that permit. So there is some revenue generation from that. Um, the other thing that I would say in terms of amplification, we have talked about. Um, particularly as an example, the park in Depot, um, Depot Park, where we have that. Um, that decking, we discussed putting in bonding there, and potentially being able to have. Uh, musical performances there, and there are some instances where you might want amplification of sound. Um, so that you can have many concerts, I don't know that that was necessarily busking, but I think it's something to think about. In terms of how we have music performances around the city, um, whether you want that ability to amplify sound. Or street performers. Um, so next, that's provide general comment, um, or comment on the general content. I will incorporate feedback and comments, and I'll send it to city attorney for review. That draft will return to council for deliberation, and part of your deliberation could be not now, not ever. Um, we just want to make sure that we propose the policy because we have. Sounds good, so that we're gonna go with an adjournment at seven oh one PM, thank you, and we'll take a break. And we'll take a break before I'm beginning. I'd like to call the Tuesday main conference Duval Council meeting at seven oh five PM. Would y'all please rise and join me in the public? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Certainly.
Certainly. Mayor Obermunder.
Here.
Mayor, Mr. Henry. Mr. Eisen. Mr. Shaffer. Mr. Murphy. Your, Mr. Stoffel. Your, Ms. Knappland.
Here.
Ms. Kupel.
Here. We have a forum. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Being done, we have a motion to revisit the agenda. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we have four proclamations of our meeting. This is a very popular month for celebrating, so I'm sure there are plenty of other important recognitions that we made. I know one of them that I had was at public service, recognizing for all of those who work in public service in each year, which includes everyone in this room as well. So we'll make sure we get that on the next agenda. First running in our regional media record is National Military Service Month. Whereas the brave members of our armed forces have dedicated their lives to protecting our nation, safeguarding our freedoms and upholding the values we hold dear. And whereas the sacrifice that's made by our military personnel, past and present, deserve recognition, honor, and gratitude from every citizen. And whereas the spirit of service and patriotism exemplified by our armed forces, a beacon of unity and resilience in times of adversity, not only serves as an inspiration to all, but also fosters within them the unity and resilience in times of adversity, connecting with all of their common cause. And whereas the commitment of our service members extends beyond their duties on the battlefield, encompassing their vital contributions to communities across our nation during times of peace and crisis. And whereas the observance of National Military Service Month, a significant period that provides an opportunity for all Americans to express appreciation for our military personnel's dedication, valor, and selfishness. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim the month of May as a significant and momentous occasion marking National Military Service Month. I call upon all citizens, government agencies, organizations, and businesses to collectively honor our service members for appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Let us recognize and celebrate the indomitable spirit of our military personnel, past and present, and reaffirm our unwavering support for their noble mission. Next one is Peace Officers Memorial Day. And I would start our office here to the here to the family. Doesn't take a call, we'll figure. Whereas, all of those who serve as peace officers dedicate themselves to safeguarding our communities, upholding the rule of law, protecting the rights and liberties of all citizens. And whereas, peace officers with their unwavering courage, compassion, and commitment stand as beacons of selflessness in the face of danger, often risking their lives to ensure that they see the love made of others. And whereas, the sacrifice that's made by peace officers who have laid down their lives in the light of duty deserves solemn recognition, remembrance, and honor from every member of society. And whereas, with purpose of peace officer memorial day, a profoundly solemn occasion serves as a poignant tribute to the courageous men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice while serving in law enforcement roles. And whereas, the dedication and sacrifice of peace officers embodying the highest ideals of public service, inspiring us to uphold justice, protect the vulnerable, and promote peace within our communities. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day. I call upon all citizens to observe this day with appropriate ceremony, tributes, and ask of gratitude honoring the memory of those who lost their services in the public service. Thank you chief and thank you all for that. The next one is city clerk's office week. Whereas, the offices of city clerk, time honored and vital part of our local government, not only exist throughout the world, but is also universally recognized for its crucial role in maintaining democratic processes, ensuring efficient governance, and serving as an essential link between the residents of our great city and its government. And whereas, the mayor of the city of Duval, city council, and its city government have issued the office of the city clerk, a position held by a highly trained and experienced public service whose tenure is a testament to their unwavering commitment and dedication to public service and to the residents they serve. Whereas, reaffirming the office of the city clerk's role as the professional bridge between citizens, local governing bodies, and government agencies at all levels, and their steadfast pledge to maintain neutrality, ensuring that all residents of the city of Duval are treated equally and fairly regardless of their identity. Whereas, their efforts extend far beyond mere paperwork, encompassing vital responsibilities such as record keeping, election administration, public information dissemination, and fostering transparency within local government. And whereas, their tireless dedication often goes unreckonant amidst the hustle and bustle of daily life, yet their work is the linchpin that holds our community and governance together, directly benefiting every one of us. Whereas, professional city clerks and their deputies continually strive to improve the administration and the affairs of the city clerk's office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings for the state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the city clerk and their deputies, past, present, and future. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, mayor of the city of Duval, along with the Duval city council, recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty four, as city clerk's office week. Let us all take this opportunity to express our gratitude and appreciation for the invaluable contributions of the city clerk's office. Let us recognize their pivotal role in upholding the principles of democracy and ensuring the efficient functioning in our local government. Furthermore, I express my appreciation to the Duval City Clerk's Office and all professional city clerks in the state of Washington for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they serve. Thank you clerk of the town. It's not me, the job. It's very, very detailed and complex. A lot of legalities to it and we are very fortunate to have a clerk that does it well. Last proclamation of the evening is Kids to Parks Day. Whereas, May eighteenth, twenty twenty four is the fourteenth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, hypercholesterolemia. Sorry, that was a term. And then Americans to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of outdoors. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, mayor of the city of Duval, hereby proclaim May eighteenth, twenty twenty four, as Kids to Parks Day. All right, and now we all move on to comments from the audience. And so I'll go ahead and read our rules for the public. During the designated commentary period within city council meeting, individuals are honored to three-minute speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to Q O Box one three zero zero, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast, or sent by email. Please be aware that the city council is forthin its commission solely entertained public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary session. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently harness them to the city council or the relevant order commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable order commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. With that, do we have any members of the audience here that would like to provide a public comment? We're being done, so we'll go ahead and move to the event agenda. We have a motion to approve this evening's content agenda. So. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Councilmember Knappland, you are in the meeting. Can you please register your vote?
I, I don't think I was fast enough at unmuting and reuniting, sorry.
Thank you. All right, moving on to schedule items. First up, some mayor's report. The Association of Washington Cities Statement of Albu Committee had its second meeting. We were not able to get through the entire agenda, but we've been having some really good, robust discussions about modifying the existing document with members from the state. Another reminder that the annual conference is coming up in June. And that will actually include my report this evening, it's been quite a couple of weeks relatively speaking. And with that. City of New Jersey.
Yes.
So we will start with an update from our fellow works department. Director Lynn just came out today, so next slide please. He did provide some comments. His department, so really quickly, and if our city engineer can answer any questions, that would be a pullback, I probably cannot respond neatly. But third up, new corporate project is going on this week. We acquired a state transfer permits in April, construction starting this summer. The Tull Water Main Insulation is nearing completion. King County, creating water lily at Lake Rethmiston in July. So King County will be out there treating some of the water lilies. So planning for that onsite outreach will happen in June with the county members that live nearby. This is a no cost project to the city. And then we are finalizing the hundred and forty second Phase Two sidewalk plan. Inviting for construction will happen. One more addition. Expert public. City engineer, Director Brandal, good evening, mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. I just wanted to add one thing that's very, I know, super exciting. So the high school, we're a culture pub, had planted all of the planters today. So they're done with that and we want to thank the high school and live at Duval to value for the plants that cost, along with helping with the design to the planters, hanging baskets. The brackets will be here next week and then the basket will actually go up to Duval. Thank you, city engineer. Next slide. I'll turn it over to Director Thomas.
Hi, good evening, mayor, councilors, we're being blinded by this. A conference of plan, quick update. We completed the community survey process. It closed on four fifteen, we had over six hundred responses and a summary is in your pocket. My update didn't completely go in, but that's okay. We did put that in your pocket and we hopefully I have a couple of slides. If it's the one, maybe I filled up the wrong week. It's been a week, sorry guys, sorry. It is in your pocket, even if I don't have the slides in here, the survey results in your packet. So we're excited, having almost six hundred responses is pretty amazing considering we're a town of about eight, of about eight thousand. Our comp plan update, we had a transportation update tonight. Laura and I are already talking about capital facilities elements this week, so we can start to move that forward. We also have the first item that come normally, which is your kind of your draft holes and policies. So we have that for economic development, land use, housing, and environmental sustainability. So we're finishing up those internal pieces. For the P T S, we're preparing for the joint workshop. We'll have an agenda and a package out on Thursday. I hope to see everybody there next week. You know, council focusing it, planning commission will attend this as well, so we're excited about that. Oh, it did, okay, so this, they gave us data, just someone in the. So this is in your packet, but we always like to show it publicly as well, because we have some, some of our public here. So you can see that this is just your highlight, so we had three hundred and thirty responses. They, that they liked the small town feel. Last week at our open house, you know, we always scratch our heads a little bit as planners about what does that really mean to the community? So we're going to explore the idea of what small town feels. We asked everybody to fill out a sheet or put a post it up at our meeting. And so we're excited to get those tallied and then to continue to explore that conversation. The next item was the natural environment, pretty, pretty typical. It's what it's been the last couple of comp plan cycles. Same with rural, kind of that rural setting with, you know. Same with rural, kind of that rural setting with agriculture around us, you know, the rural King County area around us. And then really high up there, which is really common, is the sense of public safety. Not much has changed from, you know, comp plan to comp plan since about two thousand and four. And then you can see there's a couple more that are still pretty high, so like the community and the people, parks, rec opportunities, local businesses, welcoming communities. And so you can see it starts to go down a little bit. What are the top three issues that, that our community feels is facing us today? A decline of rural character, traffic, specifically regional traffic, and residential development. The next item was what issues do you see us facing in the next five years from now? And it still remains a decline in rural character, traffic, but instantly enough, it's the lack of housing and the cost of housing. So when you compare three to three, those kind of bump into one another, right? Next slide. The top four areas that should be prioritized for improvement, but you can see that we have four areas where we had, you know, well over two hundred responses. The regulating development to maintain a consistent community character, maintain expanding our parks and rec, prioritizing street, ensuring natural environment. Those are really still, again, tend to be the thing four or five things that we talk about, you know, every comp plan cycle. How would you rate your quality of life in Duval? It is a strong trajectory that our community really loves, the community that they live in. So having that many up in the five and four stars is pretty amazing, and our consultants share that that is not the norm. So I just want to highlight that really quick for our council and planning committee in our community. What items should be in the next budget cycle? I cannot read this, I apologize, but I will skip over if I cannot see in the glare. We also asked, where do you work or attend school? And so you can see from Duval from home, where they go to Redmond or Bellevue, outside of the home, Duval, Seattle. So you can see there's a lot of people that are either going to school here or have their jobs here. And when we come back at the next meeting and start talking about economic development and the data from there, you'll see that one-third of our workforce is now work from home, is remote work. That's pretty high. What types of businesses needed in Duval? Of course, you know, everybody still wants restaurant dining options, youth-oriented recreation, entertainment, all age recreation as well, and grocery stores, more grocery stores, more grocery stores. Don't say cost. Where do you work or attend school? I actually shouldn't, sorry, I didn't cut it up correctly. Do you live in Duval? And the vast majority, or yes, we always do, so we can pull the information out of who lives in Duval versus who lives outside of Duval. How long have you lived in Duval? The zero to five, that's a, that's a change from our last comp plan cycle. So it's, it's a pretty significant swing for that zero to five, or at least to respond to our survey. But I think the both, that both can be true. Where did you move from and why did you choose Duval? And so many came from outside of the area, but most came in from King County somewhere else to here. I think it was interesting, we did get a lot of responses from people that were either outside of the US or were new into the country as well. That will be new demographics for this time. And then even elsewhere in Washington State was pretty small, so most people are coming from King County.
Thank you. So I have a couple of slides tonight. The first thing is we have offered, and she has accepted, we have a new deputy city clerk. She's starting on Friday, May seventeenth. We're very excited to have her. She's from local from Homie Valley, and is very excited to get started. Police administration special positions, first round interviews are continuing this week, and we're hoping to finalize those and have interviews with the chief, potentially later this week, early next week. Code enforcement officer, those first round interviews begin the week of May twentieth. So lots going on, again, really excited about our applications that we're receiving and the interest that folks have incoming and being employed in the City of Duval. I will share that City Hall feels great right now. It's really lively, stuff are really engaged, and it's a really exciting and healthy place to be. So. And we had two interns start this week. They started on Monday. They were here, one was here today, and they'll be in and out throughout the week. Today, we threw everything possible at our intern. She kept asking for more work. So we'll keep getting into her. So one of the things, their big projects are they're going to build content for the website. One of the things that, one of the things that they are assigned to do is help fill the mayor and city council pages on the website. So over the summer, we'll be getting you all in contact with them so they can help fill your content. And they will also have city camera, where they'll be out taking pictures. So if you would like to have pictures of you engaged in city activity, I will be giving them your headshots so they can find you. I never have to take pictures of you doing city work. They're very excited. It's really fun to have them at the City Hall. So we do have sad news, though. We are losing a fellow. So, and we wish her the very, very best. So with that, we have some staffing changes. So right now, Stella is an associate planner and a permit specialist. She's doing both. We will be refilling those into two positions that were approved by council, an associate planner with a two-year LCE permit specialist. So right now, the planning department is utilizing vacancy in our senior planner position for the associate planner vacancy. That will be the topic of mine. Then we'll be restructuring for the building department instead of a point five permit specialist, that'll be a full permit specialist. We'll bring that forward on an agenda bill on five twenty-one. We do have a vacancy right now in community development, so we're trying to figure out the best way to utilize that vacancy as well as additional resources to the building, building department. As you've seen from Laura's presentation, Director Thomas's presentation, month after month, we are in pretty extreme permit processing period right now. We don't see that stopping, so we need to add some resources. So at the next council meeting, you'll see that proposal in the package. Next slide. So updates on the economic development grant, Northwest Art Center, from Donald Grant, for the art one one. So hopefully they will be able to regroup and potentially have that estimate in the future, but we will not have that. We've not heard back yet from Snow Valley, tell them whether they are accepting a grant, or we'll reach back out. I want to try to update you. The organizational assessment and workload analysis project, the kickoff is next week. We're very excited about it. We think we're going to have that tool and all of the data and, and, and analysis ready for budget. So we're very, very excited. We are in contract review right now for the municipal financial plan. We received a really good proposal. It came in under budget and includes helping council participatory process. So that will also come forward in written support on, in the next. So again, we kind of will use the three-legged tool, all the tools that council will need to make those really important financial decisions. The municipal financial plan, well, it's actually kind of four, four, four-legged table. The municipal financial plan, the facility plan, workload analysis, and then the pre-design for City Hall and other buildings in the city. So we're getting excited. We're going to hopefully have this work done at the end of the year, and hopefully we'll have the contract for municipal financial plan in the next package. Next slide. And finally, if you haven't seen it yet, please look at City Hall, the ribbon installation this afternoon. This is a really nice event, and it's finished, so that is the final. On the right side is the ribbon from the fence, the whole fence, and on the left is the ribbon. So we had kind of good crowd putting it up today. A reminder that the June eighteenth council meeting concludes with the annual conference for Association of American Cities. Quite a few of us, the mayor and I, will both be gone. Do you want to question whether, and I'm not sure about others? So one question which we can have later is whether or not you want to have that meeting given that there'll be quite a few people here on the June eighteen.
Yeah, if you want to just go around right now. I will be at AWC on the eighteenth, but just kid and school and the beer and stuff, I do have a conflict, so I'm not available June eighteenth. And I, I don't know, I don't think we have anything huge that would need to fall on, have we been skipping it? We likely would need to skip the first July meeting because of how the calendar falls with the Fourth of July. So I think we'd be okay if others were okay skipping it. So I'll just ask, are there any injections to canceling the June eighteen meeting? Seeing none, so would be.
We did have a council inquiry about CPR training. We have another section available on the twenty-fourth, from six to ten PM down at the Department. Any council member interested in getting CPR emergency? And then this weekend, on Saturday, it's our Saturday and Friday event. Council members have an option to speak at that event, at the ribbon cutting. So please RSVP and let me know if you would like to. I do not need to RSVP to need to attend, but we are trying to create an agenda for speaking. We have other county electeds who have shown interest in, interest in coming to that event. We're trying to put together an agenda for speaking, so please let me know if you'd like to come if you'd like to. Next slide, just a reminder, we have a couple other events coming up. So on Monday, busy weekend, so we have the Art Pride event on Saturday, and on Monday, and also I should say Sunday, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and family members that will celebrate Mother's Day on Sunday. And then on Monday, we have the Duval Cultural Commission Community Workshop, where the visitor center will be sectioned off. In this area back here, we'll be discussing the art installation on birth in Virginia and asking the community their input for that very large installation. It's twenty-six panel. In the front, right room, we'll be asking the community on future art that they would like to see in the city, whether that sculpture, performing art, murals. So we put together an interactive set of activities that community would they would like to see in future artwork in the city, and then on the left, it's a discussion about a theme for the mural at the mini bar, asking the community their input on that mural. And then on Tuesday, May twenty-first, here at the visitor center, we're celebrating armed forces day. We're offering ice cream, so they're going to come and give ice cream to our members and their family. We will have a cake to represent our public works department, the public works week, police officer, as well as any of our employees who have served in the military. So hopefully a fun event on prior to how it started on May twenty-first. Our Eagle Scouts are going to join the mayor in raising the Armed Forces Act at City Hall, and we also have members of the American Legion. So please share this flyer with me. The Duval Farmers Market started, and they did a really nice shot on this flyer. We are running additional electricity. We're able to find budget to add more electricity on there, so that should be done in the coming weeks. And then finally, I think the last thing. I think, we don't have Rita here. I think it's last, we have sixteen vendors, baked painters. We're having a food truck. We have five to six performers on the stage. The D-Bo is going to be transformed into an art center for people to come do art, that hopefully they can display in some meaningful way. So hopefully, really kind of, really looking forward to it. A lot of work has gone into it, and I really want to acknowledge all the work that our partners, Snow Valley Pride and Pride Crest Ridge, as well as Rita, our community.
Questions for City Administrator right now?
Yeah, I had a really quick question about the municipal financial plan. Will there be a forecast model part of the deliverable?
They have included the, as part of their work plan forecasting, yeah.
Okay, and then my other question is, do you?
For council, we'll see if any of you have questions on that? Any other questions on the financial plan? All right, go ahead, Councilmember.
And then I was just curious if we had an estimate of when we would see the year-end financial report?
The year-end financial report, so I think we have put the finance update on the June fourth council meeting by Reckless. And that June fourth council meeting will have the year-end financial report as well as the annual report. And I believe when I talked to Director, you may have the first quarter report. And I believe it's on June, the June fourth.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to, just a special call-up to City Administrator McNabb, Rita, and the other staff that have pulled all of these just incredible things together. The municipal financial plan and the workload analysis have been on our agenda for several years. And Cynthia is one that's getting a proper finish line here, and I think I owe her a debt of gratitude for all of them that is going to help chart that path forward for the city as the building does end up over the next several years, starting to slow down as we reach more of that building capacity and help us plan for the future to make sure that essential services are able to be maintained, which of course is part of what we're exploring. So it is a lot of absolutely incredible work. I'm very excited about everything coming this Saturday and the Friday event and all the events that are coming forward. It would not be possible without having both Cynthia here and Rita in her position, as well as all the partnerships that that extra capacity has allowed to grow and foster over the last couple of years. So this would not be happening without these staff people, so I just want to make sure that I am acknowledging that and sharing that with council. So thank you. Councilmember.
Yeah, I just sort of wanted to dovetail a little bit. One is, I wanted to just do a call-up. I really appreciate both the work you've done on the science and all the other projects you've, I know you've been involved in the last couple of years. You've been working on the planning commission, so really, really appreciate that. And then just more broadly, I think on some of the others, you know, there's been, this was actually a pretty dense city administrator report, both from a vet perspective, but also even what you included from the planning department in terms of the survey results. And so, you know, again, it's, it's really a testament to the staff, but also is a reflection in terms of the city, in terms of where we're prioritizing our, our efforts. And as you called out, you're that we're making some progress in the path that we're moving forward.
All right, over to the Councilor.
Yeah, this is really a common question, but I'm not sure how many of you had a chance to go to the Farmers Market this past week, but it was by far the most well-attended, both by customers and by vendors that I've ever seen. And had a nice festive atmosphere. And had a nice festive atmosphere to it, so I want to commend Rita's staff, anyone that assisted with that for uh making that, uh making that happen. I think that is a big plus to the world.
All right, uh moving on next to council and committee, uh committee reports. Um, do you want, do you want to have anything that you'd like to share?
Just really quick, and I'm trying to remember wha- what was between the meetings. I'm reading myself, I'm sorry, but um it was three days, even if I was. Uh, I went to the Earth Day Festival and then also, you know, the open house that Director Thomas mentioned and just in general. I just wanted to say, I'm always blown away by the staff and how they interact with the public. And they just, I, I don't know, everyone comes alive, you know, and gets super interactive and the opportunities that were here for people. The senior fellow and hostess or whatever. And then at the, you know, the Earth Day Festival, I uh Clarissa was in the, the booth with the, the little, what are they called? Yes, and I was telling her, like, we have a whole window deal, the ones my kids make every year. And they're all so large, somehow. But I just, it's so important to the community. And when we look at the survey results with like the, you know, worried about rural decline, things like that. But the one that really stands out is that community feel, that small town feel. And those are the events and the interaction of the city staff that really keep that alive. So just want to thank staff so much for keeping that all of my core.
Um, and next we have uh an update for our cultural commission with cultural commission chair and president.
So, what can you go to? Just to give you an update is where we are and what we're doing. Uh, we are in your cultural commission. We've been working since January, trying to get stuff done from a Excel sheet that was given to us. It told us what we needed to do and what we would like to do, and then goes the rest of stuff to us. Uh, my new chair, Commissioner D A, who's sitting back there as co-chair. Uh, Commissioner Fraser, who actually put this report together for me because I'm terrible at PowerPoint. And our others, uh, Commissioner Gomnana, under Riddickian, those were all so. So what we've done so far up to now. What we've done is we had our very first meeting in January. And Director Loretta Chesky came up to us to give us some information about the new park. And typically naming those parks and possibly making signage in order. Turns out the two of us are former graphic artists. One of us is still trying to be a graphic artist, and we decided, why not give it a try? And these were the options that we came up with, uh which I believe were accepted by the director. Uh, this was also a way for us to try and find out how we were going to work. The idea that we should assign a point person to a project who goes to work on it, comes back to our council, discusses what the problems or options are. Gathers information from the rest of the council, finishes it up and then presents it. So we were actually honestly trying to find out a way to how we were moving forward on that. And frankly, it is not pretty good. Next, please. Uh, this is the other one. This has just been completed today, as, as uh Administrator McNabb mentioned. I didn't have a nice finished picture at the time, but this just got done today. Our, uh, there were some kind of, some concerns about why we moved this to happen right away. It was important for many of us on the commission that we didn't stand before. Uh, and with the help of the staff and everyone, we got this taken care of. Uh, the, we did everything we could uh by the book for it, getting, getting uh public, public comment, which was wildly, wildly positive towards this. And now we're doing, we finished it today. The dedication is, I believe, Sunday, Saturday. And the pride event, which we actually didn't have anything to do with on that, that was all Rita, is happening right afterwards. We did give feedback on that, however, and uh we're happy that this happened. And that's where we are so far. Next, uh, next slide, please. These are the projects we're currently working on. So we're working on the park naming. But there are two new parks opening up uh here in town that we're trying to get named. Our biggest thing that we want to do with that is we want to involve the Snohomie and other indigenous tribes for naming. Uh, we do have three different parks named Taylor. And we would like to see some a little more natural one, or not natural, uh native one there. Um, we are signing, we're just, we just assigned a point person to that, going back to our previous uh ideas, uh which was Commissioner Riddickian. Uh, who will actually be kind of a liaison with the indigenous tribes, again, coming back to those with their uh feedback and possible interaction with us, which is what we're really hoping for. Next slide, please. We're currently working on the refreshment of the plant project. This was actually a project that was done or started in a previous cultural commission that got held up during the pandemic. We just recently extended this out uh for sixty days. We've only received, I believe it was four, uh, four or six missions. I would like quite a few more. We've actually expanded this to sixty days. We've also expanded the geographical area of the artists. Who were originally supposed to be just for homing balling. We've extended that out to anywhere in King County and Snohomie County. Uh, with a preference for indigenous uh tribal uh workers. The divisions we've gotten of, they look really good. This is the uh first of Virginia Bureau, which is one day that we're working on. We're gonna have that open house coming up uh on Monday. Uh, this is a project that we expect to actually take over a while. There is plenty of different panels on there. There is quite a few ideas and options on there. We are completely public involved in it. By basically allowing them to design something that we could come up with. We would still have an art director to make sure that it was all cohesive. But we definitely want to have the uh, want to have the uh, the public involved, not in this, and it's designed, but in its creation. Uh, there are talks about publicly closing off the street and making a small little art fair where people would work on the mural itself. But at this point, it'll take a long time. We are expecting it to last probably two or three years. And we'll, we'll be doing it phases across the entire, entire mural. Next, please. This is another one we're working on, the Duval Market Herald. We're running, basically running the same process for this as well. Although we're trying to see what kind of uh materials we want for it. If we want you to do in a mural, if we want to do mosaic, or if we want to do ironwork, or what we're trying to do. We're still working those uh that out right now. But uh, we're, and also what we're trying to find out what we want is the subject of this. We're pretty much going to go with some sort of nature, nature uh, nature or uh natural theme to it. As we all found out that uh, as we come into town, that's the first thing we see. And you're in here going home, you don't want to see something busy, you want to see something following. Or we're going to work and we need something following. Slides, please. Future projects. Now, we're still working off of the Excel sheet that we were given at the beginning of our term. So most of these have already been budgeted out for. Uh, we want to do utility wraps where we cover up our utility uh, utility boxes. We're planning to actually uh try to involve uh students on this. Maybe have one that's in a competition and we will, we will, we will do the other wraps as per the, I believe the, the electricity company actually has those. But maybe have one that could be a competition that a student would do, and we would do that as a, as a custom wrap. Uh, we have self-directed art blocks, which we would love to have basically a pamphlet of all the pieces that we have around town and create a walking foot to get you out and about in Duval and around Duval, outside Duval, uh outside of all the community suburbs. Uh, for that. We also have a city mascot design. This was something that was done on a revised sheet, which I'm not sure if that is something that we've got budgeted yet or if it's something that was uh, that was just added on after talking. Uh, many of our commissioners have ideas for this, many involving long-necked members. I'm a hundred percent behind that, but we will get to that as we get to it. Uh, the wave mining signs will also be refreshing. We're gonna start looking at possible designs for that. Uh, we had so much fun doing the uh, the park, new park signage, we might want to seriously that as well. Uh, the summer music crawl, that is actually usually run by someone else whose name unfortunately is Susan at this point. So we need to actually work with them and find out exactly what they need from us so that we can get working on that, because that's coming up very soon. And finally, the visitor center mural, it will be the mural back here. We haven't decided on what we want for that yet, but we do know it's. Next slide, please. These are ideas that we have had that have not come from city council yet. Uh, our rich trolls need work. Uh, they're, they're, they're kind of, we would like to see if we can get the original artists to come back and refresh them and possibly find ways to repair them and keep them repaired. Uh, they don't look like they have much protection from the sun, unfortunately. Uh, plank cube installations, our old plants need to go somewhere. We're probably going to put them up at Depot Park.
Uh, yes, I spoke to Al with Director Loretta Chesky, I think about two weeks ago, and we think we have a dead place for that in Depot Park.
Awesome. We should, we should find the person who designed this and move it over to, to President Myers. Uh, but yeah, that was one of the art, art directors of like, what can we do with the old plants? Uh, we would like to do it in inventory, it exists in art and its condition. This would be part of that uh art. So we can find out where everything is, what needs refreshing, what needs uh fixing, and unfortunately what may need it. It's, if it's beyond repairable, we can't find something we can repair it to in good condition. We're also opening conversations with local tribes, which I mentioned earlier. The idea being, we want them involved in our stuff. We want them to, we're gonna have a liaison, but we want them to come to our council meetings, our official meetings and determine what they would like to see from us. Because I feel that it's important that uh their voices get heard as well. And finally, river giraffe thing. This is a uh proposal by one of our commissioners that has been sort of seconded by me. How kind of a way to use the river as an art piece? Such as possibly having for, like I said, the ball days, decorate up some boats, have them pass by in a little river break thing. Uh, that was literally an idea floated over dinner about a few days ago, so we haven't talked about it at the committee. We will be doing that fairly. Any questions?
Yeah, this is more, I mean, you sort of touched on it, right? And I think in, in two places. One was sort of the inventory piece, the other was the art war. Um, you know, if we look towards sustainability and some other things, it would be great to incorporate potentially some of the technologies in the website. You know, the embedding of QR codes on the art pieces, if they put bits in them and then leverage the content on them on the website. So just another thought, I mean, I, paper is, is, is great in terms of providing a resource before we can just walk. But I think that's another way, anything you could create, if we could help to, you know, make that available through other methods, including from an ADA compliant, you know, it's speakable or other things like that, just something that.
There was actually an idea floated around when we were trying to figure out what to do with the paint plants. And we had considered putting them all around the city and even kind of, not so much hanging them, but putting them in parks. With a QR code that you could scan and basically check mark that you've seen this one. Uh, doing that with our art off would be great, because it could also send you to a website that would talk about why the art pieces there are part of this point. That's definitely something I would keep in mind.
Appreciate the, the work that the commission's done today, that's uh, you've accomplished, I think. Speaking for myself a lot more than I certainly anticipated we did that on this one.
We don't know what we're doing, so we're leaning.
Are you waiting for me?
Yes, I was like, council.
I didn't hear. Um, thank you, Commissioner, for that great presentation. I, I'm wondering if you could go back to that slide on the mural, I think it's on the one on First Street, First and, how many, maybe?
First and Virginia?
Virginia, yes. I guess I'll start talking while you're looking for it. Um. I was reminded when I was looking at this location that I had received a, some feedback from a community member several years ago, and I've kind of been having it in my back pocket, thinking, you know, when, when could I bring this up? And um, you know, one of my comments at one point about a mural here is, I was like, it's kind of in a residential area. I'm not really sure how that would work. But then I remembered this location and the comment I had received was that there, the, where all the trees are in this picture, that is actually an empty lot. And I, I don't know if it's really developable. It's very small. Um, I don't know what could be put there. But the suggestion that I had received was, wouldn't it be amazing if that was a little pocket park? And there really aren't any pocket parks up in that area for the residents in that area, in the, that neighborhood. And, you know, it might be a really neat place for a bench to look out towards the valley. Um, you know, if the artwork was installed there, you know, maybe you could put a little slide built into the, the slope that is part of the grade of that lot. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know if this is the perfect time to bring it up, but it just got me excited thinking about um the vision that that community member had had for that property. And that, you know, maybe um, maybe that would be something we could do to, to, you know, bring in a mural and community. Uh, anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I feel like the news in this area, I would so appreciate that, but I will be next.
Uh, city administrator McNabb, um, I will take a note of that and add it to the list of things that we collect at the uh community open house on Monday.
Henry? Uh, thank you for this presentation. I'm super impressed with the amount of work that the cultural commission, not, not surprised, but just impressed by the amount of work that the commission has done already. And, you know, the ideas, I knew a lot of ideas would be coming up and like, it'd be great to get that feedback and, and see that. You know, I know it'll come at some point in a proposal, um but I especially wanted to call out um the work with indigenous tribes. Cause I think that, you know, that's been identified many times, so I'm so excited to see that starting to come alive in a meaningful way. Uh, because I think it's something that's sorely lacking from our community and almost everyone, I mean, you know, in the naming. Oh, I do have a style named Taylor who's thrilled. Um, anyways, so I, I'm excited about that. And I just, and, and I've gone to coffee with the, you know, Snohomie tribe. And they are so excited about uh getting more involved and have so many things ready to go too. That really wouldn't take much time to take that conversation, but it will be an achievement. So I'm just, thank you so much. This is great. I'm looking forward to seeing what else comes next.
Uh, along with LGBT stuff, indigenous stuff, which is something I'm very, very, very interested in. I'm not indigenous myself. I have many, many indigenous friends. And anything that can get more voices from all those sources, from all sources here is something I agree.
Hi, Councilor Shaver.
Well, originally, I think, and to say what Amy was talking about, the, I'm very excited about the Native American art and the culture being incorporated more to uh in, in Duval. I think that's a big plus for uh, for all of us. Uh, and along with that, you know, again, my, my thanks uh for doing things as quickly and as well as the commission has. I'm very, very impressed with what the, what we've seen so far, and it just really cements the idea in my mind that we did the right thing. Uh, reinvigorating the cultural commission. Uh, and uh, one, one comment, and I think you guys have already considered this, although I haven't made it to any of your meetings. But uh, uh, along with considering murals, uh, I'm hoping you're considering also other alternatives like, like uh metal art uh types of things, especially for the uh mini art and the uh person Virginia uh areas. I think uh because of the cement backing, uh those can be uh, you know, excellent candidates for uh metal art. I, I know you all have seen what the, well, sculpture in the Woodville with the trout and the waves and everything, you know. You know, something along that line would be fabulous, we could pull out. But anyway, thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Those are on our, on our, on our, our ideas, lots of different, different types of uh, I forgot what it is, different types of media to you two create. If any else. Well, thank you for your time. I super appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. Um, it, I was gonna go, it's absolutely incredible what you all have done in such a short period of time. And the care and thought that's gone into um implementing what, what the city already has and solicits as well, coming with new ideas. Um, and really working to be inclusive, especially the, the indigenous uh people in our area um and of all people in our community is absolutely fantastic. Um, this is what I envisioned um when we started moving this back up and um to the kind of version that it is. Absolutely heartwarming. Well, thank you for all, for you and all the commissioners for all the amazing work.
You're, you're quite welcome. We, we moved here to Duval because of the arts. And we stayed here because of the arts. And we'd like to, we're glad to be part of this.
Thank you.
All right, we have one presentation tonight um on the proposed short-term rental policy, director thoughts. Good evening, mayor council and members of our community. Uh, this is really the first true time that we'll talk about short-term rentals. Uh, we have five complaints related to short-term rentals over the past two years. And we've worked with existing property owners to let them know we're gonna bring this conversation back to city council um in May. And so now here we are in May, so this is. to City Council um in May. And so now here we are in May. So this is just an overview presentation. And then we'll talk about direction um towards the end of the presentation. Feel free to ask any questions during the presentation. I can stop and we can have a dialogue. So why are we here? Well, one, this is not in our code. And when you don't have something outright in your code is defined, it is typically considered prohibited, that it's not outright allowed. And parts of our zoning code are outdated, so they don't include some of these newer terms of short-term rentals. But we're smaller cities and we honestly haven't seen them up until recently. So we're here to talk about what the definitions are, discuss why short-term short-term rentals are important within the region and within Dubal, and then receive guidance on our next steps regarding a short-term rental policy. Rentals of a residential dwelling unit, which can be the entire unit or rooms for a short period of time, less than thirty days. This really does come out of statute. And so when we looked at it, you can see RCW sixty-four um defines that. And that's basically what every community uses is under that thirty day mark. Um, a lot of times they're facilitated by an online platform like Airbnb or VRBO, but there are actually a ton more than just that out in the um, you know, I'll call it in the space. Um, anything that is not a long-term rental is defined differently and is a traditional rental. Next slide. Um, what a short-term rental is not, a dwelling unit that is occupied by the owner for at least six months during the calendar year in which fewer than three rooms are rented at any one time. A dwelling unit or a portion thereof that is used by the same person for thirty or more consecutive days, so that's over the thirty day limit. A dwelling unit or portion thereof that is operated by an organization or government entity that is registered, I won't read the whole thing, but that's out of statute as well. Uh, next slide. Um, so a little bit of background, so these are all the places that right now you can currently.
Councilmember.
Well, first question, can can I ask questions now or can we wait for them? Cause I'm afraid I'm not forgiven for the way.
No, yeah, no, that I go ahead and yeah.
Okay, that that one's fine.
Okay.
Good. Uh, when I, when I read this, I was scratching my head at the very first uh uh valid item. Uh, up by the all by the owner at least six months in which fewer than three rooms are rented at any time. So does that mean uh they could rent two rooms at a time?
So this is what a short-term rental is not.
Right, no, I understand.
Okay.
Uh, so, so since, since we don't allow for term rentals, do we allow item, the first dotted item right now today? People.
Uh, we have not been asked that question and it is not defined within our code.
Okay, okay. And why the renting rooms would not be a short-term one?
I, you know what, I'm gonna have to put, actually, I we are attorney here, so maybe I can ask them.
You can ask me. I don't know if you're familiar with this uh specific language, uh, but my, I wonder if it is intended to apply to things like boarding houses, which are slightly different than short-term rentals, and maybe drawing that distinction. That is my, my guess. I would obviously have to maybe go back a little.
Yeah, no, that's good. I think we'll need some clarification.
And I'm gonna have to ask council to keep one question per per topic uh before we go around, so maybe, maybe we should ask the whole question, but we might want to go to the end. Um. I'm wondering, because I think we could end up two hours of questions if we don't do otherwise.
Yeah.
Uh, councilmember.
In my, I'm pretty sure it's kind of related to to what uh Councilmember Shaker was asking, was on the prior slide. It was really the distinguished distinguishing between the bed and breakfast, which is a lot like an Airbnb. And uh and 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 a short-term only. And again, that's blocking code, so it may require sort of pressing the line a little bit, but that was the one to me. I don't see a lot of difference between the bed and breakfast, where you're renting a room or part of the room in in the house and then and the uh short-term.
So in our code, we actually do define, um, we do define those and they are allowed mostly by community permission if they're within our residential self.
So that's the reason.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, there are two million short-term rentals listed in the United States. That's that's quite a few. Um, the market is difficult to track as property listings are spread across a lot of different websites. Um, demand is expected only to increase, especially in the midsize and small and rural markets. The one thing that we've learned, um, we've been through some webinars and trainees, is that there's a lot more regulation happening in larger cities because there are so many short-term rentals. And so, for example, Hawaii just passed a law last week that is going to rule back their short-term rentals. And so you'll see that in some of those larger areas. So Seattle rolls back a regulation or Bellevue does, then it starts with pressure on kind of those smaller and mid-sized cities as well. But also good pressure on them for short-term rentals, because we don't always have maybe a bed and breakfast for a small boutique type hotel. And so that's kind of where that pressure comes from. Um, Greenwich has recommended that small key, a small community implement a compliance program in the near future. And this is part of the training. We went through MRM, mid-war research, we utilized the APA. Um, we did quite a bit of research on this and there are a lot of different ways to look at short-term rentals and how to regulate them. But we're gonna go through what that could look like, because it has, you have to plan it out, like what is your goal? Um, and that's what we have to look at first. So potential benefits, we always look at the benefits, you know, you kind of do a cost benefit analysis anytime you do a policy update. So it provides an additional source of income for homeowners. So think about this, like somebody that might be single or somebody that's elderly. And they can rent out a room or rent out an ADU. Um, it does increase the value of homes. Um, it provides more lodging options. It offers local experiences, like when we have you know, Dubal Day, the graduation or those things, we don't really have anywhere for anybody to go unless you're going, you know, to Woodville, Redmond, Bellevue, Monroe for lodging. It also supports our local tourism and economy. Next slide. So why regulate? Uh, most governmental concerns are, uh, we don't have a common health tax, which is a local uh a lodging tax. So most cities have that. It's another part of your revenue source for your city. And those dollars are then dedicated to economic development activities. Uh, compliance with lifestyle standards commonly apply to other types of lodging, impacts the surrounding neighborhood, traffic, parking, and noise. That one is probably why we received complaints um in one of our neighborhoods was because of the impacts on the local neighborhood. Um, impacts to existing infrastructure, water, septic, trash, uh, traffic. Um, so we'd always look at those, impact to housing affordability available, the supply. That is a real challenge and that's what we see with a lot of cities starting to um reduce, potentially reducing the amount of short-term rentals they have within their communities. Next slide. So why now? So we did receive a complaint. Um, we identified six short-term rentals that were in operation. And we issued, you know, letters, which are part of code enforcement in both twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We didn't want to identify a specific parcel, so we just kind of put them in what neighborhoods they were at. Um, short-term rentals again are not currently allowed under our code. Um, currently, there are no other short-term rental options in Dubal, which is do we have, you know, a little Airbnb in town or do we have, not Airbnb, sorry, uh, you know, a little boutique? You know, maybe something that's like, you know, four or five rooms right in it. Um, so six STRs are identified, uh, four are in an entire house, one is a room and one is an ADU. And the zoning designations that we're seeing them in right now are between R four and R twelve. Not really surprising, that's a pretty good mix. So recommended regulatory roadmap. This is where we have to start thinking about what we're gonna do and how are we going to look at it as a community. Um, allow STRs, um outright bans are difficult and expensive to force, of course, that's why we're here. Um, tailor policies specific to the community. That's what, what is your vision and goal of short-term rental? Um, start with a goal, not a regulation. We always try to say that in anything that we do in planning, but here it's very important. Um, you'll have to dedicate resources, you know, to have this policy, to draft this policy, and then to enforce the policy. Um, and then most, you know, for us, that's important is create enforceable, simple, and consistent regulations. That's the thing that we always talk about. Simple, enforceable, easily understandable to our community, to our planning commission, to our council, and our staff, you know, that have implemented. Um, again, communicate widely, that's the education, uh, proactively enforce and be up to date with best practices. So we're actually in a really good time for short-term rentals because there is a lot of change happening with policies around the country. So regulatory considerations, so these are just some of the things we want you to start thinking about. Um, short-term rental definition, you know, we would use something that's right out of state statute, that's what other communities are doing. We look at land use and zoning, where do we want them? In all zones, in some zones? Um, dwelling, uh dwelling unit characteristics, so occupancy limits and parking. Um, for those of you that, I'm assuming that most of us in this room have done some sort of short-term rental. And a lot of times when you go in there, you'll see rules. Um, that might be, you can only have this many people, you only get one car, whatever those look like, quiet hours or X. Um, the host operation, the good neighbor notice, and an emergency contact. That's probably really important and we saw a lot of this, and especially in the newer policies. And you want to kind of let your neighbor know what's going on and then you always want your neighbors, for your HOA, to know who they can contact locally if a problem comes up. Uh, the permitting process, I think that's kind of the easiest one, you know, permit, a license requirement fee, whatever that looks like, like that's easy to resolve. Um, enforcement process, that's fairly, you know, fairly easy. We try to never take the fine approach, we take a soft approach and have conversations and get essentially voluntary uh compliance. Excellent. So common regulatory practices, so these are what we call best professional practices. So only allow permanent residents to operate as STRs. Uh, don't allow rentals and subsidized housing, uh, set neighborhood, potentially, these are just some things that neighborhood quotas limit or not allow signs, although I would say limit because you want somebody to know where it is. But I can't tell you how many cities actually prohibit the sign. And I will tell you a personal story. Uh, I went to one in Walla Walla, it did not have the sign, and the directions actually said it's at the neighbor's house. And we not, yeah, we're always gonna keep. So there is, there are reasons why you want to have um some signage, even if it's small. Uh, you do want to require adequate parking, rampages, and recycle, just because you don't want to impact the neighborhood. Um, require hosts to post the noise permit. So whenever you go to an SDR, you'll see that you're gonna have a binder and there's like a bunch of rules in there. So that's kind of where that would be. Um, require a local contact person, encourage hosting in certain areas and timeframe, require physical safety and habitability inspections. Next one. So steps to an effective SDR regulation, research, 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 is what, which is what we've been doing. Will need to identify the stakeholders, which is typically some ignition council, maybe a couple of people that want to have that, maybe even with a chamber, like getting a couple, you know, a group together. Um, define your planning objective, what are you trying to accomplish within the community? Um, draft the policy, incorporate feedback, commit the typical policy writing for any, for any of our departments. Uh, so next steps would be policy direction, um, you know, like looking at a timeframe, begin policy work in twenty twenty-four. Begin policy work after we're done with other things. We'll need to scope the work, potentially issue an RFP. We need to look at policies and budgets. And now, sadly, capacity as well. So that was really the end of the presentation. So uh we did just put our source material in there and in your packet, you also have some of the, some of the documents.
Mayor President McHenry? I have enough time to research this. I I thought I'd just ask, it'd be a few, you know, off the top of your head. Um, no matter what gets decided in the future. Um, and I love all the potential considerations, you know, like neighborhood quotas or anything like that. We do have a lot of initiatives in Dubal. Um, I wasn't sure where this would fall, so no matter what's decided here, if they're allowed and whatever restrictions, would HOAs have the power to say, we don't allow them in this neighborhood? I feel like I've looked somewhere before that actually had their own. Uh, only this percentage of these homes are allowed to be come rentals. And if they had met their quota and you wanted to rent out your home, you were on the list, but you couldn't do it. So I was curious for the hierarchy of that.
That is a really good question. We do not implement or regulate um HOA CPNRs, that was done by them. If the city allows something, um, then that's a broad policy statement. And then they, the neighborhood was like, okay, you can't have short-term rentals and locked on how they use either. And so those are things that those groups have to, you know, have to go through the conversation if it's part of them, they want that changed. There is a process for HOAs to do that.
Councilmember.
So on one of the slides, it said something about um ideas for regulation. I think that was the slide, and maybe that's not quite right, but it said permanent residents to operate short-term, short-term rentals. So what, what exactly does that mean? That the the person would have to live, actually, the homeowner would have to occupy the home for a certain portion of the year and only rent it out for some portions of the year, like maybe somebody goes to Arizona for six months of the year. I'm just trying to understand what scenario that is. Um, capturing.
I think it's more about having a local contact. Um, and it depends, like, if you're doing just a room rental versus like renting out like a mother-in-law or an ADU. So there's a couple of different ways that we have to to look at it.
So the person would have to live within city limits, within.
But councilmember, we've had one question.
Oh, I thought I was allowed to have like a clarifying question, but it's fine.
So we, so we don't. It's not you get one follow, that's not. Yeah.
So councilmember, we don't have an answer to that yet. That is something that we would work on as part of the policy work. So that would be a question that we would ask, that we'd ask ourselves as we're going through um, and looking at the goals of the policy.
Great. Any other questions?
Uh, I have. This is more sort of a preparatory question based on some of the comments that you made, but in terms of how we're thinking about this, I know one of the, I think it was the prior slide, but you know, I think about the goal rather than the policy. So I think for this next working session, sounds like we should be, you know, whether it's increased short-term acceptability or increased housing thought, or, I mean, ba- basically, I wanna, I wanna come in prepared and we have this deeper discussion. So beyond this, I think that's something we're all gonna have to think about. And we may have different opinions and and different points of view. Um, I assume they'll all have to be part of, you know, soliciting feedback from the community as part of this broader process in terms of what they think about it as well. I didn't see that specifically up there as part of the the policy development. We obviously have a public hearing or.
Yeah, it would be a full-on process. And that's part of like, are we gonna have like an expert group? And we, we talked a little bit about that as we went through the slides. And because this is a brand-new type of policy, I would look at having a small working group to kind of go through an exercise of the goal, like what are we trying to accomplish? And then like, it's kind of like the fears and opportunities, right? Like what are we fearful for versus what can we get and trying to marry this up into a policy?
That that helps to this, this could be maybe the like of uh, different points of very different view.
Yeah, it'll there will definitely be different points of view, like it's it's been difficult for communities to go through the short-term rental policy.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I got, I got a few comments. Uh, first of all, it, there was something on it about the difficult to enforce, not having short-term rentals. I think, actually, I think enforcement costs are going to go way up if we allow short-term rentals. Uh, enforcement and police time uh will be in involved with that. Uh, enforcement and police time, uh, will be in, involved with that. I personally have the experience of living, previously living in the same neighborhood as a short-term rental, and, uh, I think most of the people that rented were, were quite good, but, uh, there, they all, uh, there were, there were noisy parties, there were, you know, noisy cars, there were, you know, people that made, you know, that made it, uh, feel unsafe, uh, specifically for children, uh, in the neighborhood. And, uh, lastly, I think, as councilmembers, we need to ask ourselves one very important question, my question is, do I want to have a next-door neighbor that's a short-term rental? If you're after it, yeah, right, you know, they go for you. If you're answered no, I don't want to have my next door, nor the next-door neighbor is a short-term rental, then we should not be in favor of, uh, this, uh, at all, and you guys can probably guess where I stand, uh, on this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, councilmember Natalie, and then I think that's the one.
Thanks, um, I, I definitely agree with councilmember Schaefer, it's, I, I would have a real hard time, um, thinking personally, if the house, one of the houses in my cul-de-sac, let's say, became a short-term rental and people are moving in and out, and when I always have, when my little kids were out riding their little bikes in the cul-de-sac, just thinking of people, you know, constantly moving in and out, I would be really worried. Um, you know, residential neighborhoods are residential for a reason, they're not a commercial neighborhood where people are, you know, using their home as, you know, a lodging business, and I, I have a lot of concerns about this, so. And I also, just kind of going back to our bandwidth as a city, of what we have time to focus on, um, you know, I, I agree that it would be very difficult to enforce and monitor, and just the amount of time it's going to take to potentially have community input on trying to draft the policy, I just wonder if this is something that, um, maybe we should table until after the comp plan, and we have some more time to focus on this. Um, it's, yeah, anyway, I, I don't know about what the timing is, but it seems like we have a lot of really important things on our plate right now.
Thank you. Um, I want to share, um, a slightly different perspective that comes from both sides, and that is, um, having been a renting short-term rentals as well as, um, having a home in a neighborhood, um, in Chilene County that does affect a short-term rental, um, very. Um, when, uh, and also having participated in many sessions that are organizations like National League of Cities. Um, when policy is done well, it does not impact neighbors. Um, I think part of the big challenge of why there's, um, oftentimes a gut reaction, um, is the short-term rental policies of five years ago in jurisdictions and not the short-term rental policies today. Um, so that's one big issue, um, even five years ago, um, they weren't nearly as well regulated as they are now. Um, the companies that often are the leasing agents for these, these organizations, um, work, uh, when the right policy can live, work extremely closely with the jurisdiction, with law enforcement. Um, some cities across state actually were, and they can't, they can't report, so they have noise monitoring equipment required in the buildings, so that if the noise level goes over a certain level, the local police department is notified, and the owner of that rental is completely on the hook for a very large fine. Um, I've also started to be looking at, uh, opportunities for family vacations, et cetera, more and more limits, age limits, um, on who is actually allowed to rent, uh, certain short-term rentals. Um, again, so I think that, um, I think that really actually evaluating this, uh, on a true large-scale basis is really important. Um, I do know a family in town that recently built a home, uh, that has a, a second floor, um, that they, you know, would like to, you know, they expressed to me that they would like to be renting that out. Um, they have kids upstairs, so in that particular case, that's going to be a very, very just, um, an ownership where there's a significant amount of discretion and who's allowed to rent. Um, having been next door to them, especially in a holiday, there are parties, however, um, I find in my experience, personal experience, a lot of it is that, um, it is not necessarily any different, um, than living in a neighborhood, um, during a holiday season. We have neighbors behind me that have loud, loud parties on weekends or the entire twenty years we play from camps. So I think, um, you know, making sure that there is a really good analysis, looking at what the opportunities are to make sure that, um, neighborhoods are not negatively impacted, but it also is in fact a huge challenge in our economic development side because a lot of people come out here and recreate, um, and they don't stay here. Uh, when we talk about having baseball tournaments, when big rock fields eventually get expanded, those families don't stay in Uval. But a baseball team might stay at a B and B, they might stay at an Airbnb, um, overnight with their team or with a family, so that they're not driving an hour or an hour and a half to a tournament. Um, this comes from personal experience as well, and trying to find hotels near a few, when there's not a hotel within an hour distance. So I think there's, um, the, having an open mind to look at, um, the broader issue, the broader impact to the community, um, and rather than shutting it down, but waiting until the right time and capacity to have um, a full discussion, um, would be a, a large benefit for our community, um, at the whole. Um, and I think we also have business owners on Main Street that have been interested in, uh, developing these, these types of, uh, facilities on Main Street as well. So, um, we, I think we've all probably had good experiences and bad experiences. Um, but I think that, um, we would be doing a disservice to, um, our community in the whole by not taking a full look at what our options may be, and what the actual impact on the community would be possibly, so thank you for letting me share. Um, councilmember Hubel?
I would just like to add that, um, in my experience, I think if we're allowed short-term rentals in Uval, it's going to be primarily for, um, like, Mayor was saying, for little league events, it's going to be for family events, like weddings, graduations, um, birth. Things that, there's nothing close by here, you, most of us can't put twenty people up at our house. Um, it's not going to be like an all-the-time thing, it's going to be for certain events, people will want to come out in the summer and be like, oh, Givale is in California, and it's been hours since he was down, I could, like, be here and get to all these other places. I, I think it would be beneficial, and in these economic times, that people can be.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sort of on the fence with this issue, but, um, so I kind of like, it's perceived as a policy development, kind of loss. Really just to call, prevent it to work, um, for staff, one of the things that I, I sort of heard the comment about, people moving in and out, to me, brings a different image to the one I've been doing at Airbnb. Within the policy, you define that it's only within a furnished residence versus people moving in and out, is, that was more of the, the question, I assumed there's a lot of tools to have a crafty policy that would define what that thirty-day, up to thirty-day rental looks like, where, you know, staying in a people in, like, a hotel for, for a day in a furnished unit, where we're just bringing suitcases versus, I think, was referenced, there were four empty houses that were, I don't know if those were truly empty or just, uh, you know, empty in the sense that there wasn't a permanent resident there, but is, are those the types of things that could be written within the code as well in terms of the type of, of rental, or, or how that rental property is furnished?
I can't, I 100% answer it, but I'm assuming, yes, that we can look at certain criteria of units fully furnished.
So I'm kind of, I, I think the exercise of exploring it is, is worthwhile, and you can sort of figure some of the stuff out as you go along, and then make a decision based on it.
I'm not sure if all our council has been able to weigh in yet, but I've talked with some administrators, this isn't a policy that planning can take on right now, so your option is, if you want to do this policy this year, is that I will create a scope of work for an RFP, and we would hire that work out and go out and see what that cost is. And I need to come back and have a conversation with people, that even at this time, I cannot write an RFP probably until I, um, get the department re-staffed, because our main focus right now is our comp plan, our transportation plan, our capabilities, that, and our child development plan, plus we have a couple of other state narratives to code.
City administrator right now?
Um, yeah, I think one of the things that we might do and consider is, um, one of the other components done this year, in which case, Carter Thomas is right, the staff right now don't have to have to be for it. We are going into the biennial budget process, and so this might be, if we think about what policies you want for the two-year period moving forward, might be one of those budget items that we include in our budget proposal, um, for uh, the coming years, as we think about priorities we want to have in policy. Um, while we have staff and the comp plan will be done, we do, you know, each of these policies has an economic commitment by staff to do it. So we want to think about what policies we want to look at for the coming years, and it might be twenty-five project as opposed to twenty-four, but again, council can decide if it's something you want, um, to prioritize in twenty-four, but the internal resources.
Well, you probably guess, uh, my, my comment is not prior, you know, I do not want to prioritize it during twenty-four, certainly, it's kind of my, my consultant, uh, related to this, I don't see any particular urgency, uh, on this, and if it's something the council decides to want in budget, would be an excellent, then, then, you know, so be it, but as far as trying to to, uh, take up precious staff time or come up with money for a consultant, uh, we here, we'll stay in the.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Natalie?
I feel the same, I, I'd rather look, um, at, look at this maybe in the next budget cycle, if then, um, yeah, I just don't, I don't think we have the bandwidth, when I look at the community priorities, when I, when I saw what, you know, the results of the comp plan, um, outreach to the community, I just don't see this as a higher priority, I see a lot of other things the community cares passionately about that we should be spending our time and money on.
Thank you. Yeah, I, um, oh, it's, it's tough, because I, I feel for people who want to go down this path, and this is standing in the I just want to put that out there and say that I do, um, but there's also a greater group of people in the community that we have to answer all of. And I think we owe them, you could explore this and have this conversation, but timing-wise, my concern was going, you know, if, the push for it, like, this year, even with a consultant, it still takes a lot of staff time, because you're going to need staff input as well. So getting a consultant is one piece, but I still worry about with all the other big things we have going on this year, I don't know realistically staff would really be able to contribute in a meaningful way, because we need staff to contribute to that process. Even with a consultant doing the heavy lift, I think there would still be a significant pull on staff time as well, but that's just like, it's, that's what it seems like from past, right, so, um, I want to, you know, explore it, I want to be open-minded, I, I'm a bit of, I'm not quite sure what it would end up looking like, or, you know, like councilmembers have said, a little bit on the fence, I suppose, but I'm willing to have the conversation with the community, but I don't think we should rush it, um, yeah.
Thank you, I think we're hearing consensus on twenty twenty-five. All right, uh, with that, uh, we have one more item in the business, we have an investment submission under R C W four-two-nine-three-zero, uh, one-one, one, so, F. Um, some twenty?
We take a time, um, an actual time instead of a, a duration, so right now, it is eight through to six. Um, and I would say nine fifteen, um, for, uh, uh, obviously, if you're, that's okay, uh, but nine fifteen, and then obviously the, the, we need to come out and announce, and still, and, 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 because we have to come back out to, to, that makes sense.
All right, um, and we do not know if we're actually keeping?
No, we don't know.
All right, so the public is walking today, um, but we will, um, retreat to the downstairs. Additional action other than anything resulting from this, that potentially, that's, that's.
Start it? Well, actually, we have to wait for a friend. Oh, we have a forum. All right. We welcome the castles merge from executive session at nine four P M. We are now featured one for our check. You know, it's like you're using a screen when you merge.